I'm going to... I know what you call it. Done in the statement. In the course. Participation. Dealing with the, um...
Custodial?
You can see how it's here. The award of a public contract for the custodial services portion, but not part of the...
Feedback. Feedback going on. Why is he...
Telling you.
In the portion that... Addresses the acquisition of real property for the construction of a elementary school Would you please let me make this statement? Is everyone finished talking?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
All right, gonna start over. I'm going to participate in the portion of this closed session that deals with the award of a contract for custodial services, but not in the portion that addresses the acquisition of real property for the construction of that elementary school and additional easements needed for construction of the high school because of potential conflict with clients in my firm. All right, now, do we have a motion?
I'm sure we haven't had a vote on the agenda yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Second motion is second.
Yes.
That was the same as the first, but we'll just roll into it. All in favor, the motion is...
Aye.
The agenda aye, all opposed. All right, now do we have a motion?
To protect its bargaining position or negotiation strategy, I move that the school board convene a closed meeting pursuant to section 2.2-3711a3 of the Code of Virginia to discuss and/or consider the acquisition of real property for construction of an elementary school and additional easements needed for the construction of high school number six and pursuant to Virginia Code, section 2.2-3711a29, to discuss the award of a public contract for custodial services that involves the expenditure of public funds.
Second. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried unanimously through the closed session.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
Camera.
You need to get the certification?
Yeah, let's do we read back in first, right?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, certification.
We're waiting.
Read back in.
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one two of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on October eleventh, twenty twenty-two be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Guy?
Agree.
Ms. Halsted?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agree.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
Ms. Sigmund?
Agreed.
And Dr. Warren?
Agreed.
Then if your motion has to stay.
Any action coming?
I move that the School Board authorize the superintendent or his designee on behalf of the School Board, one, to make an offer to purchase an identified and specific parcel or parcels of real estate for construction of an elementary school and additional easements for the construction of High School Six at appraised value; two, to engage in negotiations with the owners for such purchases; and three, to return to the board for review of the negotiated contract terms for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And abstaining? So motion carries six to zero.
Okay. So we can move into our work session.
Yes. All right. Call to order. We don't need authorization to participate electronically, will call for the work session.
Ms. Dr. Chase?
Here.
And Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Halsted?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warren?
Here.
And here you have the motion.
Motion to approve the agenda for the work session?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Warren, second by Ms. Halsted. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried, unanimous. All right, information items.
The first item up is a standalone VPSA bond issuance not to exceed a million, a hundred million dollars. And Mr. Fulmer is gonna bring a couple of points to your attention regarding this bond issuance and to get our High School Six project going.
So we had Mr. Munch, who is the Chief Financial Officer for the county, actually present to the FAPC and explain a few things as far as a little bit different borrowing procedure for this than what we've done in the past. And so I'm gonna have him present.
VPSA is sound.
If you want to start at the door, actually. Yeah, no, I'm gonna ask Rachel to come in. John, so I'm gonna kick it over to John while I make sure we're sharing the screen properly.
Great, well, good evening, everybody. My name is John Munch, I'm CFO at Stafford County, and I just wanted to give a brief presentation about the borrowing procedure for High School Six. As Chris said, it's gonna be a little bit different from what we've typically done in the past. I'm gonna try to just basically give a Cliff Stokes version of this, if that's okay, and then if you all have any questions, I'd be more than happy to either answer those or take them down and get an answer to follow up. So basically, as you all know, in the adopted CIP, the High School Six project has been approved at about one hundred and sixty-five point one million dollars. Of that one sixty-five point one, approximately one hundred and fifty-five and a half million is slated for debt financing. We've already issued about nine point three, so what that means is we have about one hundred and forty-six point two million dollars of debt remaining to issue on the project. The CIP originally contemplated issuing that debt a little bit over the next four years, but because of the interest rate environment that we appear to be in, what we're trying to figure out is whether or not it would be advantageous to look at a couple of different ideas for how we can do that and potentially save a little bit of money on the project. It won't be a ton, but every little bit helps in the era that we're living through right now. So one idea was to just go ahead and issue the entire one hundred and forty-six point two million in fiscal twenty-three, but as you can see from the projected expenditures on the project, the issue that we run into there is simply that we don't think that we can spend it down quickly enough in order to avoid some of the hangups that we would have when we do a tax exempt financing in terms of the interest earnings we get on the project. We wouldn't be able to realize the full benefit of those interest earnings.
Is there a percentage of the borrow that we're supposed to pay down over given periods of time, or is it just a?
So basically, the best rule I can say, the most simple rule with that is the twenty-four month safe harbor.
Okay.
So if you borrow the money, as long as you spend all of those proceeds within the twenty-four month safe harbor, then you get to keep and apply all of the interest earnings to the project. You don't have to pay the IRS back anything.
It's trying to prevent you from arbitraging the market.
Right, right, right. I just didn't know if there was a percentage or if it was a, if it was a all or none.
Yeah, the simple rule is the twenty-four month safe harbor, and that's typically what we're doing. So as you probably can see, the short version on the interest rates is, of course, nobody knows exactly where interest rates are gonna go in the future, but it certainly appears in the current period that we're in, we're definitely in a rising interest rate environment. And most people, most observers would probably agree that they expect that rising interest rate environment to continue into the foreseeable future. So with that being the case, you know, we basically are gonna be advantaged, if that happens, to go ahead and issue more of the debt than we originally planned. So right now, even though interest rates are definitely going up, it's helpful to look at it in the context of history as well. And what we're seeing right now is that our borrowing rate, you know, at the time that we prepared this analysis, was still slightly lower than the overall thirty-year average on a twenty-year borrow. Those numbers have slightly changed, and we're probably basically right on par with the thirty-year average for a twenty-year debt right now, right around four percent if we were to issue today. The Fed is expected to raise interest rates again when they meet on November second. What I'm hearing from the financial advisors is that that expected increase is already kind of baked into these rates. In other words, they wouldn't expect that when they meet on November second and increase it by seventy-five basis points, if that's gonna have an immediate jolt of up seventy-five in terms of what we would experience. But certainly what we're seeing, though, is that the interest rates that we're experiencing today are not what we've become accustomed to over the last five to ten years, especially the last two years, where our borrowing rate is then as low as, on average, about one and a half percent in some situations. So again, switching to kind of the decision points, you know, what will happen with interest rates over the borrowing period? Again, we don't really know, but if they continue to rise, then there's a lot of benefit to issuing earlier. If they fall, then there would actually be some benefit to delaying, but most people are not in the camp saying that they believe that interest rates are gonna go down. How quickly do they need to be extended? Again, we talked about the twenty-four month rule in order to retain and utilize all of the interest earnings. And then in terms of the borrowing program, a lot of times typically we would go into the VPSA pool of financing program, but in this particular case, because the dollar amount is over twenty million, we're eligible to participate in what's called the VPSA standalone program, and that allows us to use the triple-A bond ratings that we have to get a lower cost of funds on the project. The VPSA pool program typically sells at equivalent of a double-A plus, so the rates are slightly higher with that. The other advantage with the standalone program is that we get to be in full control of the timing and the structure of the issuance, so if we look at interest rates and it looks like we've got maybe a temporary dip in the market, we may be able to react a little bit more quickly and take advantage of that dip in the market as opposed to waiting. If we were to do like a spring pool, we're at the behest of VPSA's timing, they're gonna sell it at the beginning of May, and that's just when they're gonna sell it regardless of what the rates are looking like at that time. And then, yes, again, looking at the savings, probably the biggest thing I would point out here is the interest earnings, where if we follow the adopted CIP, we'd be looking at an estimated one point six million dollars of interest earnings. That number jumps to approximately three point zero million if we do the two issuance model. And then the total debt service, you can see there's about two point eight million dollars of savings in the overall debt service for the project, so we think that that's beneficial. And then in terms of the proposed schedule, where we go from here, you know, this is the discussion point at today's School Board meeting work session. To answer any questions that you all have, on the October eighteenth, I'll be asking the board to authorize a county administrator to advertise a public hearing, actually two public hearings for November fifteenth, so that we can consider the issuance of debt with the board supervisors, and there'll be some appropriations that have to change because we'll be varying away from the adopted CIP. And then I plan to, with your all's approval, come back on Tuesday, November eighth, to the School Board meeting to discuss again the authorization of an application to VPSA and also a formal request to the county to issue general obligation debt. And with that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm gonna summarize real quickly. So historically, we've done a pooled program through VPSA, so anybody that's been on the board for a couple of years are familiar with that. And so we pull with the other school divisions in the state to try to get a better borrowing, better interest rate, or cut down on our cost of issuance. And so what we're doing differently here is we're doing a standalone, which is still through VPSA, they help organize it, but we're doing a standalone just for Stafford County. So Stafford County is gonna be the only one actually, you know, selling bonds to take out that debt, but that allows the county to use the triple-A bond rating and get a slightly lower rate. The other piece of it that's different is we're borrowing more upfront instead of throughout the project because we expect the interest rates to rise over, during the period of the project, which means the cost of borrowing is gonna slowly get higher and higher. So going out on our own to use triple-A, lower interest rate, borrowing now instead of twelve months, twenty-four months from now, because also interest rates will go up, so we're keeping a lower interest rate there. And even though it's a standalone, the School Board still approves kind of the application, the process for that, and then the county does the final approval and receives the funds. The School Board doesn't actually borrow the money, the county borrows the money and then provides the funding and appropriations.
So FAPC also received the same presentation.
Yep.
Did FAPC have any conclusion?
I mean.
Should've done this three years ago.
Yeah, my big question coming out of FAPC is why are we only talking about High School Six? Especially because we have the approval for the elementary school at the very least, like, should we be looking? And that's one of the questions I wanted to bring to the full board is, you know, what is the process? Do we want to and what would the process be to expand that scope either at the same time or immediately? Like, come back next month and talk about elementary school eighteen in the same process so that we are?
So the answer is yes, but not now, and you wouldn't do them together because you're further along in term.
Sure.
Because within the next several months, you're gonna be moving dirt for High School Six. You're not gonna be moving dirt in the same timeframe for the elementary school, but you're gonna go through a very similar process to have a very similar discussion, but just a few months again.
But we could meet the pooled VPSA more likely with the elementary school.
We could use that, or we could do another standalone.
Yeah, and it depends on which is more market advantageous.
Right.
You know, doing the pooled VPSA, who cares what your bond rating is, because you're getting your bonds at a very different rate. You're getting them at, what is it, double-A plus?
Yes, double-A plus.
Yeah, double-A plus. Right now, we're definitely taking advantage of the fact that the county has a triple-triple-A bond rating, which is a great opportunity right now, and gives us just a hair's margin of a better rate, well, financially, that is the right decision, and you certainly could replicate this exact process, or you could go with the pooled process. The pooled process is gonna have specific timelines throughout the year that they're going to solicit applications to be a part of that pooled process versus doing the standalone, which is a little bit more on our calendar. But you're gonna go through a very similar process to answer Mrs. Sigmund's question as we are doing right now, and you're gonna do this same process again as we get further down the road on the high school project, and you take out more debt issuance to cover the remainder cost of the project when your one hundred million dollars is spent and you're concluding the construction of your project, you're gonna do the same process again.
So we just have to be patient because I had the same question as her.
Well, you're, you're not going to take out a bunch of debt right now that you're not going to spend right away. So it's like you're, you're, you're right now going through the process to take out $100 million so that you can spend $100 million over the next 24 months to build this school. But if you were going to take out a debt issuance right now for the next elementary school, well, you're not going to spend your, your money right away. You're going to spend it in a few months. So you're going to start that process.
Okay.
It's a great, great, yeah, the clock starts ticking.
So this will come to the, to the board for action at the end of November.
Okay.
If you have any questions between then and now, let me know. If I don't know the answer, I'll give Mr. Munch.
Thank you, Mr. Munch.
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you.
I do have one question.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Do you anticipate any response from the supervisors with respect to this borrowing improvement?
Well, I spoke with, I spoke with the full board at a work session on September 20th and we basically outlined the same thing with them that we went over with you today and that we went over with the finance and budget committee meeting last week. They had a few questions, but nothing that I would have deemed to be concerning. I can never really speak for them and know exactly how they will vote, so I can't say that. But based on the questions that they had, my expectation is that they would probably vote to move forward with this. And to that, to that, and it is on, right now scheduled to be on consent agenda. The authorization to advertise a public hearing is on the consent agenda for the 18th. We will get more, I think, view of whether or not they have any hesitation about it at that time if anybody asks for it to be pulled.
And then how soon would the public hearing date after that?
The public hearing would be scheduled for November 15th. So it would be just following the school board's hopefully vote to formally request the debt.
Would, I'm sorry, did you catch that date of the consent agenda?
That's next Tuesday, the 18th. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it's the 18th of October. I was thinking it was November.
Oh, I'm sorry if I said that.
No, I, thank you.
So yes, they're going to hopefully vote to advertise the public hearings on October 18th. We would come back to the full school board on November 8th for the resolutions to authorize the application to VPSA as far as the formal request from the board to issue the GO debt. And then the following Tuesday on November 15th, the county board would hold the two public hearings and then presumably would vote on the two resolutions to change the appropriations and then to authorize the issuance. And then VPSA would then do a meeting for us either late November or early December to approve our application with them.
And what about that little $10 million that was not accounted for in there? That was 165 and 155 and nine and the borrowing. Wasn't there a little $10 million gap in the 165 and the 155?
We've already either used cash or bond money for like the design costs or some of that prior cash.
Okay, all right. So, so this accounts for all the, the total 165 together with what we've already spent. So we don't have to come up with any more.
There's a likelihood that the project, because of inflation, inflationary factors, which the county and our staff are, we're all well aware of this. Inflationary factors, building materials, a whole host of issues will cost more than what was originally projected. We're all on the same page in terms of our understanding of that.
That increased cost is already reflected in our CIP request. Sort of go back to the board of supervisors. But we use the same inflation factors as the board supervisors on their projects, as the county staff on their projects.
But traditionally, our figure is higher than what's been approved for us by the supervisors for the construction, if I recall.
Well, so last year they approved the, the full requested amount. But now we're a year later and because of inflation for another year, it went up. So they did approve it all the way up to 165 million last year.
But we already expected we'd also.
But now it's 365 days later and we know that there are factors that are going on in the cost.
The inflation rate was what, 15.3% I think?
Yeah.
So we won't know that until we actually award a contract, right?
Correct. Correct.
And when, when can we anticipate?
That would be this spring.
And when will be advertised contract?
This winter.
Yep.
And then we'll have to come back.
Yeah, and that'll be Andrea.
You better be, you better be attending today. You better, we need to have a really good bake sound.
So also, John asked you to switch seats with Andrea now.
Maybe, maybe we could just have a really good bake sound before that. Come up with the rest of the money.
I do not. Just Andrea's going to take one of the passes currently now. So also, also joining us is Andrea Light. He's the director of budget and managers, management on the county side. And she's here to talk a little bit about the technical review committee process. So, so everyone is aware, we have listed all the projects, both the county and the school projects. They have, are currently being presented to the TRC. So they have not been ranked yet this year. So this isn't about the ranking and where things fall for this year. This is to talk a little bit about the process and make sure our board fully understands that process because we do have a joint school board, board of supervisors meeting next week with the board of supervisors. So I'm going to let Andrea get started and talk to you about the process.
Okay.
Well, thank you, members of the school board. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk to you about the technical review committee and CIP planning process. I always don't want you to go after anybody talks about interest rates because I find that so fascinating and I'm sure we all are at our seat.
Yeah.
So this really shows what our CIP improvement process, what our whole process is. And like Mr. Palmer said, we are here in the September, October TRC review meeting. We certainly have a couple of dates coming up that are really important to this board and school staff with next week being the joint school board, board of supervisor meeting. We scheduled this specifically before we do the TRC presentation to the board so that the school board has the opportunity to talk to the board of supervisors prior to getting any information from the TRC. So the, so the board of supervisors, other than what you have requested, does not have a list of all of our requests, has not had any sort of dialogue or discussion about any of those projects. So it is really a fresh start with every CIP process that you're able to have that opportunity to speak with them. And then in December, we have a joint school board, board of supervisors meeting. And that is where we provide to the school board and the board of supervisors the TRC recommendation and listing and ranking of all of the projects. We will have presented that once to the board of supervisors in November. But this is also a second opportunity for the school board to come back to the board of supervisors and, and disagree with the TRC ranking. You know, maybe we put an elementary school in front of our middle school. I'm pulling out project from my head. And this, and the school board has real reason that, you know, we got that wrong. And we need to really look at this in, in a, a different way. And that is the school board's real opportunity to, to say, to ask that the board of supervisors look at that in a different way. We do have the final input that we ask for the board as we're preparing the budgets in the January, February time. We do have then proposed CIP in March. In March and April, we have work sessions, both on the capital improvement program individually. And then the next week, board of supervisors meeting, which is again, an opportunity for the boards to speak. And that ARP is supposed to be April. I don't know what ARP is. When we have the public hearings and a final CIP adoption.
Yeah.
So the TRC is, this is really provided in policy that I think is attached to your agenda materials today. This is approved by the board of supervisors. It was last approved this last September, I believe. And the TRC, what we're doing right now is looking at each one of those projects. We're looking at the cost of them, how you're coming up with the cost, why you need them, what's the documentation for them. The schools have a considerable number of facility condition reports. And we have the opportunity then to read all of those.
And she's lucky.
We, we are very fortunate. So we get to read and go all through that. And what our members really do, what we've been doing over the past few weeks is in September, they have gotten all of the documentation, all of the members of the TRC so that they can start getting into this. We meet with each of those departments as a, as a group. Since last year, based on some advice from Dr. Chase, actually, we had started going to some of those localities last year. This year, we have had the opportunity so far to go to two different school sites. We've been to Perry Melchers and we've been to North Stafford. And I think we're going somewhere else on Thursday, but I don't remember where. And so that is the opportunity for that department or the schools, whoever it is, to talk about what those projects are, all of those people, all of the people that are going to present their projects. They have all of the information, like the capital improvement plan policy. So they know we are looking for very specific things and how we rank them. We do have our members, myself, I'm the chair. We have a member of our, our director of Department of Capital Projects and the county director about planning and zoning. Typically is the executive director of facilities and maintenance for Stafford County Public Schools. This year, we have, we're lucky to have Mr. White. And we have a member, a member from public safety. And then the, the county administrator may designate up to two personnel each CIP. So we have one additional member.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
What percentage of the projects that the TRC reviews are school projects versus county projects?
Typically, not this year. But in the past, our CIP has been made up of just over 50% is school projects.
Okay. But one, only one representative from the schools. Is the school's representative allowed to rate county projects?
Absolutely. Yeah, so when Mr. Anderson, your last executive director of facilities, he, such a wonderful person. He actually meant, drove all the roads. He went to fire stations and he looked at them. I mean, he really did his due diligence about looking at those county projects. Now, I will say, when, when I answered superintendent's question, we do look at large projects together. The schools do their own 3R projects, the county do their own 3R projects. And it's because it's laborious. There is, there is a significant amount of effort that goes into all of those 3R projects, which Mr. Palmer will probably tell you just from his side how, how difficult that is. And getting to a base of understanding may be rather difficult.
So the two personnel that the county administrator can designate, can one of them be a school side person?
Absolutely.
Were they this year?
They were not. We had one additional person. It's Brian Southall, who is the director of Parks, Recreation and Community Facilities. And we do like to keep the, the one or two. We've never had two additional personnel, I will say. But when we do, how that we like to rotate that among, at least on the county side from different departments so that we always have a fresh perspective.
Maybe it might be a good idea to always have one extra school personnel person. Since you always, usually don't do two, you can do two. Stick some of those people in there.
Yeah, I, I think that's an excellent idea and we can certainly.
I would love if you could bring that up as an addition.
Introduce that into next year's process like that.
I think the schools would deserve just a little bit more consideration from some people who happen to be the experts on the schools.
And what's in percent of projects.
Didn't, did we not have a MOU in the past? That, that was, I, I thought we had more than one person from the school in there. I thought we had two, school people and, and they actually had rankings. It was, it was pretty detailed. I mean, maybe go back a while, but prior, prior to this one.
I think the last time we had a joint CIP process was about 2008 when the board and the school board had three members of each board that sat as the TRC kind of oversight committee. And then it was school board and board of supervisor members. Now, I will say when these, these members that are dedicated on here have specific expertise that help with the process, like the director of planning and zoning brings a lot of information about what our compliance plan is, what is coming up in different areas. So I think it, it looks at many different levels of expertise.
I'm, I'm not questioning this. I just thought, and we've had turnover on our staff since then. But I, I recall when we first started this process of working together with the, the school board and the board of supervisors, we had a very specific agreement and I think we both signed off on it. And, and there were different levels. And it, it was like this, but they actually got into the rankings because we said, you know, how many points would you give to different elements on, on the projects. It's, it probably goes back a year. I imagine it might be before 2018. I don't know if we can, you know, check, but to respond to your question, there, there was more than one person from the schools on there. So this is, this policy was adopted by the, the board of supervisors in 2019. Is that, is that easier?
Um, essentially, there have been some small tweaks to it since then, yes. But on the back of that policy, the last page would have listed, I hope, any, that's, any revision dates. And that's the, the new school's policy, not the CIP.
Where's the CIP?
Um, it is the.
Is that this one?
Yeah, the much larger document. So at the back, the last page has revision. All of the revision dates should be listed. And I believe we also listed when the school board adopted their joint version. And that was probably it.
And that's what I, I'm just curious as to how we went from a joint to a whole, a sole source.
Yeah, it's still joint. We just might have lost a member on part of the joint process. So, and our member does rank the projects.
When I say joint, I mean in putting the policy together.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The policy.
Then the changes.
The policy was worked on between the school board and the board of supervisors. It really was staff. I'm sure, you know, did the bulk of the work. But then, you know, there was an agreement between the two boards and then somehow that went out the window and now we have a new one.
I, so these project ranking criteria, how are those percentages set? And how do they, like, how often are they? Yeah.
The ranking is based on the development policy that the board sets. They look at them every other year. We usually take or try to update our policies every two years. Last year, they did look at these rankings. They only changed the 3R rankings for, again, that relates only to the county side. That does not relate to the school side. And so I haven't presented them here. But these are the most current rankings. So health and safety is 20%. Impact on operational budget is 20%. Special considerations, regulatory compliance. So if we have something that's mandated, we'd get some extra.
Well, that's really, but it doesn't get extra. And that, I feel, and this is just me, I feel like that disproportionately impacts the schools. Because we are required by law to educate every student who resides in this, in this county. Whether they show up yesterday, today, tomorrow. We are required by law to have a certain number of students in classrooms, whether it's six or 36. And we are constrained by the buildings we have. And we are going to be dinged there because, you know, you think health and safety, all of these, you know, fire and rescue, which are essential, especially for our kids. But we're getting told to put our kids in trailers because 5%. Because we have to. And then that comes out of our budget. It doesn't come out of the infrastructure budget because we don't know. I mean, we have Lionel, we get really, really darn close. But like, if we can't, if that's not, regulatory compliance and health and safety are like the two most important things we do. And if they're not even on the same, like, measurement, then that impacts the schools tremendously.
And, and just as an example, you've got, not you, they have a fire and rescue joint training center before elementary school 18, based on just their ranking criteria now, which is why I put all this out. So there's, that's kind of flawed to me when you start to look at your health and safety criteria is flood control. When a lot of the health and safety impacts of our kids is the overcrowding in schools. And so that's not listed in here. And the understanding of what those things do and what the schools actually need. So that's just a concern for me. But then, and I get that these are all.
All county projects.
All county projects and all pots of money and all sorts of stuff. But if the ranking system is flawed, then we're going to be constantly, we're like.
Well, schools are automatically 20% of the score behind. But I think that needs to be a discussion that we have at the board of supervisors.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I'm just trying to give an example of what she's talking about. I mean, we don't need a joint training center before we need another school. And that's what this says priority wise, so.
I mean, this is, I mean, everything before. I mean, our highest school, school is 49.
May I ask a question? So.
Right.
I, I'm just noticing and hear, so.
So, I, I'm just noticing in here, so we have, we, we often argue about design capacity versus program capacity, specifically at the elementary schools. And I notice in here that it says the board of supervisors will only recognize changes to design capacity, which are voted on and approved by the school board. So do we just need to have some votes to get the design capacity changed for our schools? Is that how we make it happen?
That's what it sounded.
Because that's what your document says.
What page are you on?
I'm on, I don't, there aren't page numbers, so. I'm under existing school capacity data June four.
I think it's under the new school, planning policy.
It is under the new school planning policy. And Dr. Chase, so the board of supervisors does not vote on program capacity in elementary schools.
Sure.
Be comprehensive plan. Also, it was recommended by the planning commission to use program capacity and the board of supervisors voted to have that amended to design capacity. So those, those changes that the board, the school board may vote on would be changes to the design of the school. So if you're adding another wing to a school and you're adding four more classrooms, those classrooms hold X number of children.
Sure, but it just says we can vote to, to change design capacity. I don't see why we can't vote. Right, I mean, if I'm using four classrooms for special ed, I'm going to have to redesign those four rooms and I could put them all together and call it a win.
And that's actually regulation, how many students we are allowed to have in a special education classroom. Right now, we're not even in compliance with that because we don't have the space.
So at any rate, I, I would suggest that we may want to have some votes about.
You know, money has some votes on this.
Yeah. Well, also, just, and, I mean, and you know, we're not picking on you, right? Like, this is just, like, as I'm reading this, it's infrastructure.
It's just a lie.
But it says, is their facility being replaced and has exceeded its used-to-life and to what extent? Like, for the schools? If that's your criteria, then that's a hundred percent of this and that brings us right up to seventy-five points. So it's just, it's interesting to me to see the perception of the criteria from each side of the fence, because it's very different. And even the quality of life, your quality of life criteria, I mean, for some of these kids, for some of the, the stuff that we're putting in place, trying to put in place for them and giving them access to, like,
It's a vote.
It's, it's a big deal, it's, it's a big deal, so, I agree, vote.
I think we can finish your presentation.
I would say. I like wordsmithing. I like wordsmithing.
Oh, I'm going the other way.
Operational cost reduction.
I don't want to go backwards.
Oh, yeah, right.
Absolutely, so this is, just for your information, this is a list of all of our large projects that have been requested this year, Parks and Rec, Judicial, of course, there's the courthouse. The schools, one point four billion, of course, it says that includes. We are chair of transportation and fire and rescue. So there's a significant amount of projects that the board of supervisors will look at and consider how they, how they adopt these in their capital program.
But do, I mean, do they understand that ignoring our projects doesn't make them go away? Like, the kids are coming and they will need rooms and teachers and books and computers. And we will need space.
The kids, the kids already came, they, they.
Well, well, I just mean, it's for the long-term plan, like, just saying you're not going to fund a school doesn't mean we're not going to need a school.
They can answer that, right?
But that's, I think this is a conversation for the joint session, not her.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Next week, yeah.
Next Tuesday.
Yeah.
Let's not pick on Andrea.
Could you go forth with our ideas and just get that out of the way for us and have it done next week? What do we get that we all have a lot to do?
My life today would be so much easier if you could just do that. But if you don't mind, I'd like to, if you'd indulge me for a few more minutes about proppers. We do, there's often questions about proppers and it really kind of comes into the CIP process. Each spring, our planning and development department begins with a review, a comprehensive review of all of our proppers and projection of when new proppers may be received over a five-year period. The county finance department updates our June thirtieth year-end collection, so we have projections, we have good cutoff year-end. And then late summer, early fall, actually, two weeks ago or last week, I believe, all departments, including the schools, sit down and we review those proppers available and what's projected. And we look at those proppers compared to what is in our CIP, how we might be able to fit those in. Now, proppers don't change significantly from year to year. So we feel like this is still a good process to look at, to look back at, to look forward with. And we can consider what proppers we may have available and we might be able to use this. This year, we did a little bit extra in this propper meeting as we started to discuss some synergies that we may have. There's a lot of needs throughout the county and the schools that kind of overlap. And how, how can we come together as staff and make continued recommendations to those projects through this proffer discussion or through our CIP that may make us into a better spot? So what if we co-located a fleet services building and a joint training center? What does that look like? And so we're trying to continue to work together to do that. This here is a list of school proppers. This is a cutout from the budget, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget book and where we're projected to use those. So our current actuals is what we had on June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one, again, this is a year behind. Our future years is what's projected, what's programmed in the CIP, and then what's available for projects. And you can find the county CIP on our website and also the proffer list is also on our website.
Can you, can you put that proffer spreadsheet back up?
Yes.
So, Elementary School eighteen, they're using all sort of proppers in Garrisonville. If Elementary School eighteen is in the southern end of the county, would the proppers then come potentially from the Hartwood Rocky Run West Lake? Or is that all already spent on High School six?
So we, we would probably have to make adjustments. I mean, we, we try to do this in projections of where we think maybe this is going to maybe end up. And, and things change and we have to make adjustments. So we have to pull back some proppers and then we have to add maybe some more bond funding, maybe some more year-end fund mail-ins, so we make those adjustments.
Right, so I mean, so if Elementary School eighteen is in the southern end of the county, we can't use northern proppers for it, right? It has to provide relief specifically for that area, right?
Yes, and Dr. Chase, and each proffer is different, it has its own restrictions and limitations. So there are a lot of fun for planning and zoning to go through and try to, you know, what, what this can go to this and can go to this.
Right, so, thank you.
But generally, yes.
Traditionally, we've been told that the proppers have to go to the, a school where the subdivision feeds into, whether it's the elementary middle or, or high, is that not the case anymore?
It depends on proper stipulations, each one is different.
So, am I correct in assuming then that since we've got five different districts that are all earmarked for Elementary eighteen, there are no restrictions on those proppers?
I would have to look at those specifically, but that's what we have programmed in at this time. Again, we make adjustments every CIP cycle, we try to make this better, we try to make improvements and to use them to the broadest extent available.
So as an example, you've got one for Rock Hill that, that doesn't seem like it might fit, given a potential elementary school, forget the number in that zone. However, it may have a peripheral impact on the project because it relieves pressure in that community and that may be tied to the, to the proffer. It depends on what's written in it, but that, that is, that is not irregular to have a proffer written in a way that a new school would benefit another school that's servicing the area.
But some of these proppers probably go back decades.
Oh, sure.
Some of these developments were approved in, in the nineties. So I would be curious about that as to what Lexapro is there is and using the proppers, you know, either.
For projects.
And whose decision was that, that they would all go to Elementary School eighteen?
When we look at this as a group, we try to see which project that is going to benefit to begin with, that's already in the CIP or the CIP request. And that's how we assign them, the county attorney or county, a deputy county attorney is available as we go through these. So we are kind of talking about these, not as theoretically as maybe I'm making it sound. But, and then planning and zoning helps to guide that.
So is, is the reinclude schools, you think?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it would, and, and in fairness to the county folks, they're also operating off of a CIP document that at the time, when it was passed, it did identify Elementary School eighteen in the specific geographic zone, but that was three hundred and sixty-five days ago. So, you know, in fairness, then they're, they're operating off of a document that the board has revisited a couple of times.
So Elementary School eighteen is not a hundred degree bill, correct, is that correct?
That is correct, that was from last year's.
Easy question. Is there a way when we change a document that they may look at in the future? This might be a silly question, but how do we get it to them so that they can have what we have?
Yeah, so at your last monthly board meeting, you adopted a capital improvement plan and that week, we forwarded that document to the county. But in fairness to them, this is week three of their possession of that document or week four of it. So they're, they're processing it as a part of this process, just like we all are a part of this as well. And so as the board has reprioritized its projects, they now have to do the work of, and so does the TRC in aligning proppers to go with the projects that the board has reprioritized.
So what about the proppers that are going to be used for the turf fields, which is for them, or were they not going to be proppers?
Those proppers, so this document came from the twenty, the twenty-three CIP, which I do not believe was adopted, the, the turf fields weren't adopted on the day that the board adopted this, or they were adopted on the day, because it was late April, early May. And so this is a point in time, this is a picture in time of what we had in proppers.
Already out of date.
Yeah.
Very much outdated already.
This isn't the.
This isn't as of today by any means. This is if anything's based on last year's. This was the last adopted CIP, county CIP and how the CIP proppers were allocated.
Okay, so I'm just curious as to where the proppers are coming from that are going to pay back for the, the turf fields. Do we have that information or when that was approved, was it specified?
We can get it, we, it was specified and then resolved.
It was definitely specified and I don't want to miss any.
Yeah, I, I, so, so now that I know this is not accurate, then that makes more sense.
Well, I would say that it was accurate at a point in time.
Well, but today.
And as soon as you, yeah, as soon as you put your budget out, the next day, it's, it's changed.
As of today. Right, but if I, it's no longer accurate. If I look at this, all the proppers are not going to go to Elementary School eighteen. As of today's document, as of tomorrow's document, it might be.
Right, yes, so we're fluid in our process, but this you can find on the CIP. So at least you have a list of all those proppers. And I hope that you have a good feeling that there is a school and county process that we look at those together. We do look at those closely.
So when do you say that the supervisors will look at their language? You said that they changed some of their three R language, but they didn't change necessarily the, the process of how projects are ranked, they didn't change any of that language. But you said they do it every two years, is that correct?
Typically, we try to bring the policies updates every two years.
Okay, so this will come up next year then?
Next year.
In, at what time of year?
If my planning goes well, I would like to have it done, you know, in May, June, July, so that we have a set document, so that when the partners are developing.
When you start turning your DRC process, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Well, I saved the, the slide you guys presented when you were discussing the funding. And again, I don't know that this is a hundred percent what was officially decided on, but the conversation was around four hundred thousand from Woods and Woods, a million dollars from Winding Creek Proppers for the North Stafford Field, nine hundred thirty-nine thousand from the Liberty Knowles West Proppers and about five hundred thousand from West Gate Proppers for the Colonial Forge Fields.
And we are allowed to use proppers for fields?
Apparently.
But my proffer, yeah.
Do you, do you turn to the question?
It's good.
We have, it has expanded the use of that field, because it has expanded the time.
That's what I read, I didn't, so I was going to use, I was going to be like, okay, thank you.
And it's, yes, we can.
Yes.
And, you know, the subtext says that they had been previously earmarked for Elementary night, or I'm sorry, eighteen, and then were essentially being pulled forward to use for this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thank you, we'll see you next week.
Yes.
Thank you, all right, accreditation. Hi. Um, I know we are a little bit tight on time this evening, so I am going to go over this fairly quickly and then we can, you know, determine a process for additional follow-up questions or research needed based on how we go through that. So, as you all know, this is the first year we've had accreditation since the pandemic. So the good news is that all of our schools are fully accredited by the Virginia Department of Education. The, well, we all have, all of our schools have room for improvement, right? So no matter how high they are, obviously there's already, some of us have additional room for improvement. Okay. And then we're going to get into some of the strategies we're using to support schools that are needing some additional assistance right now and then just a little bit to go over some of the changes that have been made with accreditation. So, starting with that last one first. The last year, we had accreditation in the division was also the first year of a newly adopted accreditation process in the state. And then they have also been making shifts throughout the pandemic to move towards the SOL growth assessments, et cetera. So there is, you know, I brought with me a thirty-some booklet that goes over the fundamentals of how school accreditation is calculated. It's not a super simple process, it, it factors in a lot of different pieces. Especially because figuring out how kids are doing is complicated, right? So there's a number of different factors that go into that. Speaking about the good news, right? So all of our schools are fully accredited coming out of the pandemic. And then the vast majority, I know this is small on this screen, but the vast majority of our schools are continuing to show gains and, you know, encouraging to look at the last couple of years and see that we're continuing to come up. So thirteen of our seventeen elementary schools, kind of nothing was flagged whatsoever by the state for our five high schools, nothing was flagged whatsoever, okay? There are a number of schools that have level two concerns. And one of the things I want to point out here is that we've got two different ways we categorize this. So on our level two quality indicators, these schools are highlighted because there was a, a gap between performance between different reporting groups, right? So the overarching achievement may have been in the green, but then when you went into different reporting categories, there was too significant of a gap. And I will tell you, for our middle schools, it is all related, not all related, our worst category there is our, our students with disabilities across all of those schools right now is in the red area, okay? This is an area where the state allows us to focus on division monitoring internally so that we can figure out what we need to do, we've got plans, our school leadership team can certainly speak to that to the work they are actively doing to work with those schools.
That's a good question, do our students with disabilities, since it seems to impact that gap, do we have schools with a higher percentage of students with disabilities than other schools?
We do. And I would say, division wide, we're about thirteen and a half percent students with disabilities. And we have some schools that are in the high teens and then we have some schools that are ten, eleven percent. So there are, there are, there are variations.
And thirteen is about the national average, is it?
Yeah, it is, and we're on par with that.
All right, then the second piece here is our schools with level two academic achievement indicators, which means overarching performance across all students is below where we would like it to be, right? So we're not at the level three, but we're not at the level one that we want to be and this is across that. So Drew fit into that category, Parkerage Elementary and Stafford Middle. I believe the level two, I'd have to refresh, but I believe this was science was the area.
Yes, science seems to be an area to all of our schools.
But then um, for the two middle schools, there were also some of the um, the gap pieces, okay? So one of the things that's interesting, and I will be interested to see where our scores go this year, but um, the eighth grade science SOL, as many of you are probably familiar, covers three years of science, right? So our kids that took that last year had the majority of their middle school experience through virtual and different platforms. Um, and then level-three concerns, um, you were um, looking at significant, so this is quality indicator. So you're looking at a um, significant levels of gaps there and overarching performance. And there we have, um, again, the science across all of those elementary schools and then mathematics for separate senior. Okay, um, so I'm gonna, oh, thank you. So here are some of the themes kind of I've seen as, and we've been seeing as we've been going through this. Definitely some need for holistic support with science instruction and prioritization at the elementary and middle school levels. So we've maybe erred slightly on the side of really trying to make sure that our literacy and mathematics skills weren't um, going unattended during the pandemic, um, and we've definitely seen that science is suffering because of that, so.
Well, science, I mean, in having taught it too, but science is something that you can introduce a topic, but the hands-on piece of it is crucial to the understanding of it. And without the kids being there, it wasn't the hands-on piece that would have helped them.
Um, and then need for holistic literacy support at the secondary level, as I highlighted, um, that was kind of our big gap area in all of our middle schools, um, was in the literacy area.
And is that the ESOL or is that just across the board literacy?
Um, there were, it depended on the school, which the gaps were. Um, the students with disabilities was pretty much right across all of them. And then you saw definitely some level-twos with economically disadvantaged students. Some schools' um, EL students, some schools' different um, minority ethnic groups. So it just, it really did depend on the school, um, in terms of the combination of those factors. We we all know we're facing um, critical mathematics teacher shortages. Um, we've definitely seen that impact at the secondary level. And then, you know, the need for continuing to support, we have a number of schools that had um, high levels of absenteeism this year. While we know some of that was related to kind of quarantines and we expect that to improve, there's also um, the need to really make sure we're supporting kids with them being in the building. Um, and then, as as we've already mentioned, and kind of the performance of students with disabilities and English learners.
So the attendance. We're, we were well below the state average. Was the state average not also having to deal with quarantines and such?
My. No, 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 I I've kind of debated this internally myself, so it may partially have to do with um, how much did, you know, certain localities record absenteeism if they, you know what I mean? Like, that could have been a really nuanced category in the last couple of years, where maybe if a kid was still attending remotely, they were counting them as present, you know what I mean? So it, um, my hunch is you maybe had across different localities, different.
Okay.
I could be wrong on that, but.
For collecting.
Counting absenteeism differently.
Well, but I'm fascinated that the state would have a metric, but they aren't specifying how they want it measured.
Well, and and candidly, there there was not tight regulation over how that looks. And boots on the ground, a lot of this is dependent on how it is reported, not how it is collected. And there there isn't an auditing mechanism with less than two hundred people who work at the Virginia Department of Education to supervise a hundred and thirty school systems, and so that's where you might get some of the variance. I had a conversation with a superintendent today who asked about our attendance practices because his neighboring attendance, uh, his neighboring school district, he was trying to check to see how they were doing because they were still granting extended COVID leave for students and marking them present, which is not accurate and not what you should do. And he was, he was questioning whether whether that was a practice that he was unaware of or that that was something that should be continued and that if we missed a memo.
So are there other metrics that are wishy-washy like that, that we should be aware of?
Um, well, the the lot of the metrics that are collected, um, discipline is is one of those that is definitely, we are reporting the discipline data, but the other metrics that are being collected as it relates to accreditation are all collected by the state.
Okay.
So the the two that that we don't are the environmental ones tied to um, discipline and attendance.
Am I the only one that thinks that attendance and mental health go together though, right, like?
Depends on how you're.
Yeah, we we group them together because they do go together.
Yeah.
But it depends on how you're, like, if you have a met, like, a consistent metric across the state and how you're collecting that data. Otherwise.
Okay, so some of the different um, areas were striving to improve. We, this summer had a rollout of the new school improvement planning process, really focused on um, improvement science and the Plan Do Study Act process. School improvement plans are currently in the process of being revised to include specific targeted strategies, right? So we don't have the full accreditation data until um, school already starts. So as additional data has come out, schools have um, been adjusting and adding additional areas and wraparound supports. So this just highlights some of the different ways we're trying to think through the way we report and utilize data to support as we are going through the year process. Our instructional leadership team has been collaborating very closely with the VDOE Office of School Quality. A number of us have been attending webinars, going to onsite training in Virginia Beach, um, et cetera, with administrators from the buildings that are really focused on improvement to um, do some really deep digging. Also looking at kind of getting back to and refining some instructional learning walkthroughs to really help us um, increase the rigor of our tier-one instructional strategies. Strangling access to curricular resources, this is the area academic programs is working on. They're also um, working with school leadership on out-of-school time programming to support and reinforce content areas. We do have some grant funds to support that work right now, so they're really trying to be strategic about how to leverage that particular, the elementary school level and middle school level with um, some of our areas. And then um, intentional um, professional learning to support with effective tier-one and differentiation strategies. And then obviously, um, you know, continuing to focus on those targeted areas at each school with their school leadership team.
Can I ask a question? What what's the response been of the schools, you know, looking at what needs to be, you know, focused on? And 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 have they asked for additional resources or are they able to do it with what they have? Or, you know, what can we do to help the schools?
So I.
That where they need to be.
Going to send that one over to the school leadership team because I think they would be best able to answer that question.
I know Rodney had a school improvement plan meeting for parents and, you know, a handful of us showed up. And listened to that and they outlined like what their, you know, where, explained this to us and, you know, parent understanding terms and what that means and how they're going to address it at the school level.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know how that translates to what they are asking us for here, but they seem to have a plan, be on top of it, know where, you know, essentially they screwed up, like what needs to be redirected to reach their goals. They seem pretty confident at least.
Really glad you mentioned that.
Yeah, Wide Water did as well, and they went to Virginia Beach for training and they brought in Mike Pratt to help with their science curriculum. And they've become more intentional about it. I think they were so focused on math and reading skills that science kind of got lost in the shuffle, but they are refocusing that energy on it. But I know that they also had a meeting with parents to explain what their strategy was.
So uh, the probably the most significant change from last year to this year in terms of focusing on on continuous improvement is having a continuous improvement plan for every single school. Two of the components that are a little different than anything that our folks have experienced other than going through a full forty-five-day Plan Do Study Act process, they're already in their second cycle, very exciting uh, that they've completed one cycle. They're already on to the next cycle. Coincidentally, they coincide with nine-week marking periods. Is that they actually have to have community meetings that are quarterly with the community to discuss their school improvement plan and also post their plans on their website. So, you know, we want to be very transparent with what the schools are working on specifically. The the thing that this slide doesn't really capture is how each plan is nuanced to the school's specific needs. And uh, these are the the general um, themes that Rebecca and the school leadership team have pulled out. That they are very specific to the targeted needs and goals of the individual schools. And that's probably our our biggest crowning achievement coming out of the summer in terms of looking at continuous improvement.
So do we have resources that are available should the schools?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes. And on November seventh, it's our professional development day, and those schools are involved with, um, along with Mike Pratt, providing intensive training in the area of science for elementary.
I can't imagine three years, getting tested on three years, two of which were about.
And especially because um, the way we offer.
Which is difficult.
Science, some of the kids like took it mid-year and some of the kids had to wait till the end of the year because they put all the kids in science for one half the year and then.
Yeah.
Whatever the other question.
Social studies.
Social studies for the other half the year. It wasn't like a normal, normal schedule. But they proved it the best we could.
So are we gonna know any kind, I I know since they've um, enacted SOLs more than once in a year, is any of that going to help us in driving some of what you guys are planning for improving these schools?
So one of the things we've done with the moving to the growth is sent out to each school a student detail-by-question report, which lets schools see, okay, how did, it breaks it, it's all aligned to the SOL standards.
Right, right.
And then some standards so they can see how the kids do at the beginning of the year, which they're not going to do very well because it's on, last year it was a com- combination of the previous year, like third graders were covering second grade standards as well as third. So this year it was strictly third grade standards kind of thing. And then, so so you'll have some kids that already know the, a few things, but most of it you'll start to see by the mid-year data, you know, are we seeing some gains there? And then those pieces. Long-term goals would then be to start to longitudinally align that so that you get that by the beginning of the next year, your fourth-grade teacher has, okay, what did that look like for third grade?
Okay.
So when is the mid-year data available?
We should have that in J anywhere.
At least timely.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Chair, the next one should be a quick one. Uh, thank you, Dr. Towery. And uh, lots of compliments to the FABC for giving some feedback on how we might tighten up proposed budget priorities for the board's consideration for the fiscal twenty-four budget. We landed on three uh, budget priorities that came out of FABC and I've got to give credit to FABC for this really important recommendation, which was how to establish the rationale behind the request. And so we think we landed in the right spot um, with these. Uh, the first one focuses on having a high-quality teacher in every classroom and how we might um, approach that through compensation and benefits. And uh, and making sure that we're competitive, not just on our teacher scale, but for our entire workforce. Uh, the second one is very much focused on uh, providing supports uh, in our uh, troubled areas for subjects, but also looking at staffing and making sure that that we're meeting our school needs in terms of the, in terms of the um, support staff that are in place. And the third one has to do with um, our learning environment and making sure that we have uh, the high-quality things that we need uh, to to accommodate for our growth and uh, and also to make sure that our our spaces are safe and have uh, adequate space for students still.
I just want to say, I think these are much better. They have did a good job. Um, I just have a couple little complaints.
No.
Not really complaints. I I just think, um, I think they're really good. The only thing I really um, didn't like is in number two, to reverse our adverse performance trajectory, I think I would rather have to focus on a more positive outcome instead of the negative outcome. And then in the last one, we have a CIP for our capital needs and this is an operational budget. So I would just prefer if we truncated part of this and just said our needs for space and resources and just kept it a little simpler. But that's just my opinion and.
And can I say, uh, for for the first one, um, it says one strategy, but it doesn't say we want to do it. So I would just get rid of that and have it read to attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff. We must establish and maintain competitive salaries and benefits, right?
Okay, we we will need to edit this in the next half hour because this is going before you.
Yep. Yep.
So we just got to make sure.
And I just, I just, my thought was just um, teachers and administration critical to um, to ensure student success. Just keep it simple, or student achievement.
All right, so let's go one by one. Edits to section one.
Yes.
That you want to see.
Right, so what I would say is get rid of one strategy and just change it to to attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff.
Got it.
We must establish and maintain competitive salaries and benefits, comma, and then get rid of this strategy should include, and just make it a multi-year, maintain competitive salaries and benefits, including a multi-year approach to enhance teacher step scale, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, I I have a question.
Right.
About putting the teacher's step scale there. We got.
Rid of that.
Into a bind uh, years ago when we didn't have money to do raises and teachers, among other employees, came to the board and said, you promised me, you know, when I was hired, I would, I was supposed to be getting these raises, these were the steps.
They just changed it to salary scale.
Yeah, I I just would be reluctant to. Put out there that there is now going to be a teacher's step scale.
Sure.
Because we.
So just change step to salaries, that amenable.
To enhance.
Teacher compensation.
Strategy. Now, what what are you gonna say?
So it's where it says a multi-year approach to enhance.
Teacher compensation.
Teacher compensation, yeah.
To include.
Not even, just that competes with surrounding school districts.
Teachers.
Yeah.
Just teachers.
We don't want to give, we don't want.
Can you read that? I'm I'm just trying to get the sentence after and maintain competitive salaries and benefits. You said comma, and then I want to read after that.
I said, to include a multi-year approach to enhance teacher compensation.
That competes.
That competes with surrounding school districts, offer regionally competitive uh, compensation for non-teaching positions and provide comprehensive benefits and opportunities for advancement for all um, employees.
Okay, just just.
Yep.
Try cautiously on this multi-year.
Yep.
Because we can only commit a year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Everything has an asterisk that.
Yeah.
Well, no, I I just, I mean, we know it when we're sitting here, but once we adopt this and publish it, there is going to be an expectation that it literally, you know, it means what it says. I I don't have, I agree, we need to have the multi-year approach, but I don't want there to be a misunderstanding that we can commit for.
Right.
Multi-years, more than one year at a time.
Correct.
Sure. I know there was at least one other change somebody suggested, so I just want to get that.
Number two.
Number two.
Number two, um, it just, I would cross out critical to, I would cross out the reverse, our adverse performance trajectory and just say critical to ensure student success or student achievement.
And and I would change plummeted to fallen. Plummeted just seems so like.
Dramatic.
Yeah, it's just like, wow.
It was pretty dramatic. You lost fifty points.
It was dramatic.
Yeah, yeah, but I would still, I would still make it has fallen rather than has plummeted.
But if we plummeted, it'll be that much better when we rise.
I mean. If we plummeted.
I mean, if we did, we did.
Well, then we can say crater.
Have, you know, have.
If you want.
And other areas which have fallen in recent years. I, you know, I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to exaggerate the the depth of our our our.
Oh, it, we don't need to exaggerate it, it's there.
We know it's there. Um, the goal is this is to tell you how we, how to spend money to fix it. So, and then in the third one, the only thing I would just take out, after additional space and resources and 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 then take out parking to. after additional space and resources and, and, and then take out parking to the end of that sentences and then add building. Because I think that's all part of it, space and resources and, you know, parking, whatever, because you can't enumerate everything that we might need to. So I just wouldn't, I wouldn't list them. That's the only thing I would change. And on that, I think they're great. Good job. Thank you, Fab. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
All right, Madam Chair, we, there's one more item for the.
Can we just make sure we are all know what's coming back soon, if we want to have any questions? If we could just, just read those three changes with what you've got so we're all on, you know, in sync and then when we come back, it's just that's what we wanted. We're not voting in here, but.
Some of the verbiage might, might tweak it as I go or.
No, we, we need to, yeah.
Well, I'm just.
What you give us now is what.
Verb tense and stuff as I read this, I might have to.
We're gonna expect to see when it comes up for a vote.
And we'll get the corrected one before those were. So in number one, changing the sentence to say to attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff, we must establish and maintain competitive salaries and benefits, comma, including a multi-year approach to enhance the teacher compensation, to enhance teacher compensation that competes with surrounding school districts. And then the rest of the number one, all good there?
Yeah.
And number two, we're changing plummeted to fallen. And the second or third sentence says additional staffing for psychs, social workers, counselors, special education teachers, ESOL teachers, administrators. It is critical to student achievement, period. Correct.
To ensure, to ensure student achievement.
Okay, let me go back to this first line. Is school attendance plummeted or is just the performance of literacy? And the other, they, so attendance has plummeted?
Well, we did see that in the.
Yes.
Yep.
Attendance.
It depends on, on how you measure it.
We measured it that it, that it was chronic absenteeism in some of our schools based on the state standard.
But it may have been quarantine that resulted in that.
Or, or not. Other people not.
Right, right.
But if students aren't there, they aren't learning, so, so let's, so I, I think the attendance really needs to be there.
And then the number three, the third to last line, will say drive the determination of needs for additional space and resources, period.
Yes.
Building should be maintained.
Should we say in recent COVID years?
No.
I mean, that really isn't, is it the COVID years or is it beyond the COVID years that it's?
I think beyond the COVID years, you've had a, you've had a slow drip.
We started to see, we started to see the decline before COVID.
You started dripping from three, every year.
Well, but drips is different from the plummeted.
No, but, but, but if you've been working for five years, that's a big.
It's been, now it's fallen.
So we went from a drip to a plummet and we just.
Well, I, I just wanted to, okay, so.
But I think COVID might have contributed to our.
So let's average it, it's fallen.
Fallen, yes. The average of drip and plummet is fallen.
I wanted to say plummeted, but if it's. Come on, I would turn the drip as a, a plummet. Okay.
It feels like a plummet this year.
Madam Chair.
It's a fallen, it's a fallen.
You are, um, you may wanna grab a sandwich.
Yeah, why don't we get a dude and then come, come, come back here and, and go into the BSBA. BSBA, let's take five minutes, we'll come back at six-ten, we'll go till six-twenty, something. Late twenty, so we'll start our political hearing on time.
Oh, I'm old. He, um. Yeah, so.
Maureen or Ms. Sigmund and Ms. Randall were the people named here, but traditionally we always put this on the agenda before we go to the, the conference. So that the board has a chance to talk about the BSBA legislative agenda and if there's anything that we have comments on. I mean, it's a couple times we've had some cases where we, you know, directed our delegate to vote against certain things or not to support them. But this is an opportunity for the board members to raise any questions that they have about the suggested legislative positions and also if there, you know, if, if there are ones that there is some concern about, then we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting to take a vote. So right now it's just for purposes of, of discussing the, the proposed legislative agenda.
Do we have, do we, do we, Ms. Sigmund take minutes?
Just, isn't this recorded?
It is recorded.
It's, it's recorded.
He does listen back.
Missy will listen to, you know.
Um, so in a, in addition to that, so first of all, I wanna say this kind of stuff is like my fantasy football. This is what I track, this is what I follow, this is like my day job, I love it. Also, I did read that in, these are only the changes to their policy platform. If we as a board go through the policy platform annually and find something in there that the sitting board does not support, we have to vote in, in public to oppose that position, tell them or when they send their sign-on letter, they're gonna sign us all on. And I think that happened once, I forget what it was, with the superintendent thing, where it said all the superintendents did this and you were like, no, I didn't. They just did a blanket approval because nobody opted out and so.
We don't do it this way. We usually need, the delegates only need to discuss these things, but you have to just request, like if you're gonna have, wanna change the language or something, you have to submit it ahead of time. It's discussed and then they're all voted on.
Right, but the, the plat, like the platform after.
We've done it all different ways over the, over the years.
So like after they vote in November, that becomes the policy platform for the year. And then if we are like, well, we still don't like it, then we can vote to essentially up out of that section.
Oh, yeah, we do.
And, and that's fine. So like as far as BSBA is concerned, we can continue to discuss. So a lot of what I really liked, one, I was really surprised and I don't know how this happens, everything suggested was brought here by Fairfax County.
That's perfect.
It's, um, is it because they have the most experience and it's, it's not that they did everything because almost always there's a joint conversation. It's just they may be the ones that finalized the language with, was it JD Kessler?
The objects of that is pretty terrible.
I agree. Some of these are perennials though that have been on here several years.
Yeah. Then don't put, I mean, is it, do they have to tell us who or just make it part of?
Of course they won't get it.
They do.
I was really interested in seeing the state testing and coordination support. One, the English, um, English learners, I think that's great. That's pretty in line with what we talked about here.
Yeah.
The testing support, I've been visiting a lot of schools and one of my principals said like, we love our special ed person, but if I could ask for one more thing and would be a testing coordinator.
Middle school in particular. Yeah, the state requires testing, but then provides no SOQs
Right.
to support their administration, which is silly.
So I liked that.
Oh, hold on, I got this wrong three times. All right, good. I had, no, I had a note for that on that one, but I read it wrong now. I'm reading it right now that you're talking. Go ahead.
So the ed tech funding, one, I like funding. However, I don't know how I feel about Richmond setting what the purchasing guidelines or replacement guidelines are. Because I don't think there's a one-size-fits-all best practices. Counties that are more rural, I mean, I know they want us all to have internet, but I don't think, you know, everything else they talk about, it's about local control and local decision-making. So having Richmond kind of add a layer of bureaucracy to make, you know, some counties feel like rock stars and some counties feel like underachievers, I think is, you know, I don't think this is a good use of our efforts. I really.
You're asking for funding.
Yeah.
I don't think that they should be dictating.
I agree. The school bus purchase, I really don't care for that one either. I don't mind the whole thing about the distributor dealer thing. I think we should buy from whoever we want. But I, you know, Mr. Fulmer has told us how financially essentially irresponsible it is to have school buses. And the divisions that can afford school buses don't need support to purchase school buses. Those of us who are waiting a hundred years to get school buses need help. Um, and that, if we're gonna help for transportation, it should not go so that, you know, other counties can spend millions on buses that the rest of us
I also do like the assistance on electric buses because
I don't want or can't get.
Yeah, that's what I don't.
Some counties, they're not gonna be viable. They're not gonna be viable here.
They're not viable here, unfortunately, because of.
And if, and we're a big division and.
So we would lose, I, I, so I don't think there should be something that the state dictates because I think it fails to take into consideration individual, individual counties.
I, I agree. Well, and not only that, I mean, the state is gonna do what it wants, let's face it, but as a school board organization.
But we're asking for this, so.
But that's the thing, it's like if it's not for the benefit, I mean, if it's not to our benefit, then there are probably divisions much, much smaller than us that are also not gonna benefit. Like I feel like we're kind of like the threshold between big schools and small schools and you know, I mean, if you're Alaska or something, you have this incredible attendance zone. Then you're not gonna be able to use electric buses to get the kids from there all the way over here. Right. So didn't like that one.
Am I morphing yours?
Yes, yes.
I think Garrisonville should just be completely a walk zone. No buses in Garrisonville at all.
No cars either.
Just all gated. Standards of quality and accreditation was a little confusing to me. I would, I didn't.
Which one is that?
The nine-one. It seems like even when I go down to, you know, it makes advocacy more general and highlights potential local fiscal impacts of changes to give. I mean, it doesn't really say anything, so like why bother?
This is editorial. Yeah, that's a waste of energy for the BSBA department with that.
Proposed by Fairfax County. So safe school environment, what does it mean? Oppose legislation, and this is like too many words that seem to cancel each other out. Oppose legislation requiring the designation of school personnel to carry concealed weapons in schools.
So what they're saying is, is that they're fine with law enforcement carrying a firearm. They don't want legislation to require that school personnel be identified.
They don't want, Virginia, they don't want Richmond requiring us to arm our staff.
Correct, okay.
Again, it was one. But it doesn't prevent us from doing it either. It, I mean, I'm not saying I would, I'm just saying they talk about local control and every division should have.
I think what they're trying to say is they don't want Virginia telling us that we have to.
Right, and that's what I was trying, that's how I read it, but I wasn't a hundred percent sure. I don't really think this is in line with their policy platform.
Children with disabilities, I'm probably funding the IDEA.
So thi- this is actually a pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Because right now, and this is no mystery, IDEA is a federal program. But yet we're measured on performance of students with disabilities, even though no real direct funding is committed in a meaningful way to students with disabilities at the state level because it's a federal.
I know like Senator Kane has talked about, has been trying to get some. You know, nobody's talking about funding a hundred percent, but trying to, because it's such an expensive item.
And it's a huge unfunded mandate.
Yeah, it is. And, and, but the rub, of course, with the state is like, well, if it's a federal program, then why do you measure performance in this area against?
Why do they ding us for performance in that area?
Yeah, so there, there's some merit to getting the teeth out and the claws out on that one.
And I do like that they are trying to keep that circle nice and tight rather than broadening it because it's, it's in a really tough spot. And then math and science, we don't want there to get about things that's all.
Can I just point out one?
I would say not just vote, fund.
Can you go back up to the one under safe school environment? Um, I would just like for them to expand upon that if they're going to be talking about the one that says pass legis, I mean, I hate to tell you, but pass legislation would afford greater protection to students who are exposed to bodily fluids or, uh, and put them at risk of dangerous infectious diseases. This includes sexual, sexually transmitted infections or whatever. So this is going to be, I think, a little bit more of a hotbed topic than they. That's, um, ten, ten point four.
The third bullet.
So I don't know how we're getting back with, but this is a much bigger beast and they already do have a state mandate under that for emergency management planning anyway. As you all know, I wrote those plans as well, but the fact is, is that this is way more than just what they're saying. And this could open a very big box of, Pandora's box, just based on what is happening currently in our school systems with some people that call me and tell me we have promiscuity problems. So I just want to know, that's a lot different and that, that includes then revamping some education on SCI's and SD's, particularly in middle and high school.
I don't oppose the work-based learning opportunities one. I think it, I. I just don't. I mean, barriers to, maybe because we have it so nicely set up here that I don't understand where everybody else is coming from.
They just probably don't have. Is this not, they're weighed in on as well?
So here's, here's.
They probably don't push in for community partners.
Yeah, or, or even having some local control over requirements that you may have to meet for students to go off campus.
Be considered, right.
Campus or just making work-based learning program. There, there's some, there's something to that.
Can I ask why they deleted altogether legislative position eleven?
Love it. That's the, that's, they're taking it off, they're no longer gonna.
They delete, they're taking, oh, so they're not opposing it then?
Hey, we have, we have a, we have a new, new number eleven. We have a full number.
One more.
All right, full, full, that new number eleven there, the non-school students participating in Virginia high school activities.
Yes, that's gone and now they're, they're proposing this other one.
So what, they're not going back to address the, um.
They're going to allow local control and determining participation in VHSL activities within the local division. So they will no longer be using BSBA resources to advocate one way or another.
Oh, all right. Thank you.
That's a big step for them.
Yeah, it is. I was shocked.
They have, they have for years opposed, um, none, you know, homeschoolers, participation in BSBA.
And then, um, student transportation and bus drivers, love that. That was a really good one and I don't have a lot of impact here. And I don't know the process. I don't know if we want to look at it separately or just refer to governance and have them look at it for us. But the total policy platform, there are some things that I don't think mesh well with things we've already done and may not mesh well with direction we want to lean in, in the next session. I certainly don't want anything in their policy, which I haven't like totally, I like to read it multiple times. I want to make sure that nothing in there contradicts like what we sent to our delegates. We actually published something, um, because we don't want to end up on a list that we didn't mean to be on.
Under transportation though, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned just about that we don't make it so easy that we have people who really aren't qualified to be part of it.
It's also gonna be.
Unnecessary barriers.
And also where, where they.
Like people from Jersey.
Like I'm not sure that I want a high school student driving high school students to school on the bus.
How they do in South Carolina.
Well, we used to do it here.
It just, it's just that we have a problem when teachers look young and have a hard time managing a classroom because the students aren't that much younger than they are. I can't imagine high school students on a bus with a fellow high school student.
Well, they talk about unnecessary barriers, which to me says red tape and bureaucracy.
Right.
And then would allow us to determine what hiring students we want.
They still have to meet all the requirements for the, the CBL. And, and I think that some of the, the things that have been added to that for school bus transportation specifically relate to the number of hours that they have to drive without students versus the hour, number of hours that they have to drive with students, the number of hours that they have to spend in classrooms. And I, I hate to point out the obvious, but the number of hours does not necessarily correlate with performance.
Yeah.
Versus a driver demonstrating capacity to do those things, you could get a driver through a training program in a week versus getting an experienced driver through a training program a week versus somebody who's inexperienced. No matter how many times they go through the training program, they still won't pass. So.
And they're expanding this for crossing guards as well because there's some unnecessary amount of carriers there. And they're expanding this for crossing guards as well, because there's some unnecessary amount of carriers there that would open up a lot of opportunities for us.
So obviously, this is the board's choice, but from a process standpoint, you have one meeting before um, the BSBA conference. It may be a good idea for board members to opine and give their opinions to the chair of the governance committee and the governance committee to, to discuss this and then bring forward a recommendation based on um, opinions shared by board members to the governance committee chair. That might expedite the process.
With shared with the delegate for the conference.
Yeah.
Oh, he just means this chair, not me.
But but ultimately, you're gonna have to, you're gonna bring this before your next meeting.
We'd, if we had to come to the board, it would first.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it would be nice if they were working in conjunction, then it's sort of.
And the.
Well, traditionally, I guess, I'm, I'm confused about the delegate, I mean, traditionally, the delegate is just the person that we elect to go and go for us.
That just represents the board, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that the delegate or.
It's me, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you, there's, there's never been any special.
Right.
Um, requirements or extra work or.
Right.
Extra credit or anything like that, go with it other than, you know, you're fine enough to volunteer.
You get extra credit.
In, in, in most cases, so.
Yeah, thanks.
You know, it, it's the board, you know, we have people on the board that want to volunteer now, um, do. Alyssa, we have, we meet Thursday, and that's gonna be probably too soon to get something on, so that means we have to change your, um, our, our November meeting before the, the board meeting, which.
That's fine by me, I don't know, I have, I have some flexibility, provided I'm here today.
It's possible that we can do that. Is that, is that, you, do you wanna get the, the comments to um, missing incentive governance?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That work for you, Susan?
Yes.
So if they wanted to make changes to this language like we just did with our, you know, our priorities. Um, is that something that's up for discussion, or are they just an up-down rule?
Well, they're pretty, they're pretty much, um, they, they've rolled down things.
Usually up-down.
You, you have to notify them ahead of time if you want to make any changes to the language, and then you have to be prepared to discuss it, and then they'll vote on changes to the language.
But we have three, we have three virtual meetings, like, there are.
When are the meetings?
I, no, I remember ten minutes ago being on, there's the actual.
Yeah, it's the actual vote though, but they actually go through them all beforehand.
Yeah, there's, there's meetings beforehand that we have.
I'd say almost it's particular language, I mean, if it's, if it's like, um, scrum shell.
Shroom shell, gotta move.
Well, yes, shell and will are a big deal to me, but um.
No. None of them know that.
Yeah, well.
Because of what they mean, but anyway, I, I'd say if the meetings don't start until after our next meeting, then we'll just, we're just gonna end up putting on our agenda for the next meeting. But I keep, you know, we can make suggestions, but don't count on.
Our next board meeting is two days before this meeting.
Yeah, the vote.
This is like every cycle, right?
The public hearing, and that's going to begin with the presentation of the national colors and pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to thank Stafford High School's Navy JROTC for being with us this evening. The member of tonight's color guard are Cadet Emily Burnett, Cadet Brandon Smith, Cadet William Truitt, and Cadet Junior Boney. And the instructors of the Stafford High School Navy JROTC program are Command Master Chief Louis Wilson, retired, and Petty Chief Officer Damian Wilson, retired.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, Dr. Taylor. Tonight I get the opportunity to present to you the draft proposals of the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendars. Tonight I'm gonna go over our feedback process, talk about the advisory groups and the feedback recommendations, highlight some of the changes, and then show you actually the draft calendars for the twenty-three, twenty-four, and the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. We presented the calendar at the work session back in September, and since then, we've had six advisory meetings where we met with parents, teachers, students, faith-based advisory committees, business advisory, and the community advisory committees. We also had the opportunity to share with our principals, our pre-K twelve. And again, tonight, I'd like to share with you some of those recommendations based on these groups, folks groups that we worked with, where we talked to them and gave them the draft one calendars and asked them to provide us feedback based on what they liked and what they'd like to see changed on the proposed calendars. Based to those recommendations, it was clear that there was no consensus on most of the elements of the camp, or the calendar. However, transition day was a big hit. Everybody liked the transition day to start off the day, so our younger kids, our kindergarteners, sixth graders, and our ninth graders could actually attend school before all the other students. Also, our parents, it came across very clear, stop changing schedules, we need a consistent calendar. Many of the folks liked the post-Labor Day start, however, overwhelmingly, they wanted to have the first semester finished before the winter break in December. So in order to do that, we must start before Labor Day. There were mixed reviews on finishing the end of the year, but the majority of folks felt that we should finish before Memorial Weekend. And then again, staff, and Stafford County Public Schools are becoming very diverse as our community is changing. And several students, parents, faith-based in our community, came out and asked that we look at adding some more faith traditions into our calendar. We also had parents and students who talked about our graduation dates where they were conflicting with college graduations. And then our teachers, they really liked the fact that we had end of the quarter workdays in order to prepare grades and get report cards completed. Staff also liked that we had a two-week winter break and would prefer that. Our parents and community made a great recommendation based on our calendar that we make it clear what are no-student days and what are no-student-teacher days, and reduce all the colors on the calendar. So I think you'll see some changes to that. So basically, what you're gonna see is that we have a calendar that we're proposing for both the next coming years, that we will have a pre-Labor Day start, will include the transition day, the first semester will finish before the winter break, will end school before the Memorial Day weekend. We will have nine weeks off from the time students finish and teachers leave to the time teachers come back for the teacher work week. We also provide consistency for families and community planning with this calendar. Our winter break will be approximately, we're between fourteen to sixteen days, almost two weeks there. Our spring break, we're consistent with having it the second week of March. And then our teacher professional days are clearly distinguished between teacher work days where they can do what they need to do without being bothered by any other meetings, and also having specific teacher professional days where we'll provide professional learning. We also have in our calendar this year, we're adding Yan Kipur and also Rash, Rashashan, and we're also gonna add Eid into our calendars. And then again, the changes regarding graduation, we have moved graduation to the last week of school to occur on Thursday and Friday evenings with possible rain dates on Saturday or later, should we be. I also like to show that with comparison, we had some questions about, it seemed that we were starting earlier and earlier. So what I did, I put in a draft, and again, this was just draft for comparison, the last column on your right shows the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And so it shows you that we are going back, starting a little later, where this year we started August first, in twenty-five, twenty-six, we, teachers would come back on August fourth. So again, I just put that in there to show some comparisons of the dates and that although we are starting a little earlier, the next two cycles, the third year out, we'd be going back. So if you take a look at the draft two-point-oh calendar for the twenty, twenty-three, twenty, twenty-four, you're gonna notice that we have included those items that we highlighted. I will point out though that in September, or in this calendar, you will not see Rashashan because that date falls on a Sunday. You will also see that the week, the second week in November, where we had some concern with having a professional day, election day, followed by another day off that week for Veterans Day, we've corrected that to where we'll be off for Election Day and Veterans Day that week. Also, if you look at the winter break, there'll be two weeks, fourteen days for that break. You'll notice that we have Easter on the twenty-ninth of March and the first of April, Eid is on the tenth of April. And then I hope you notice that we have, probably doesn't come across the best here, but on your copies, you'll see the bright colors. We do have, we're using our Stafford County Public Schools themed colors and trying to be more clear in identifying which are no-student days and which are no-students and staff days. And then graduation, you'll see, is on the last two days of the school, Thursday, Friday. If you look at the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, you'll also notice that we have the same dates, but this year, you're gonna notice that we do not have Yan Kipur because that falls on a Saturday. But you will see that Rashashana is now on the calendar. And again, teacher work days, teacher professional days are clearly marked under each calendar, or each month. You'll also see that we have added Eid in March for this year. And again, we have graduation, which are the last day of school and the teacher work week that Thursday, Friday. So basically, those are the twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five calendars that we're, the superintendent is recommending that the board adopt these two calendars at the November school board meeting.
Thank you, any questions for Dr. Nichols? Ms. Randall?
So am I to understand with the graduation, that the graduation on Thursday and Friday, that Monday following both of these calendars is Memorial Day, is that correct?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sigmund?
I just wondered if anybody had, had done the math, because I too have heard a lot of, we wanna come back after Labor Day, but we wanna end before June. How long would the instructional day have to be if that was actually a possibility? It's kinda like buying all those buses all at once, right?
You would have to subtract nineteen days, we have nineteen days in the month of August, and if we would still finish by the twenty-twenty-second of December, we'd be nineteen days shorter for that first semester.
Oh, so it's the whole first semester, that's the issue? No, I agree, it's not possible, but I wanted to really just put the math out there that we would have to make it up by having, you know, a fourteen-hour school day. It's not fourteen, but like whatever that looks like. Like you can't just take days away without making it up somewhere, and that also eats into.
Absolutely, there's a give and take.
Right.
If you take something away, you have to add.
Right, and that would be equally argued by the public.
It's a, it's about an hour and a half per day that would have to be added to the first semester.
So we'd have to go from six and a half to an eight-hour school day to eat, to, to be within those parameters, and that's. Yeah, so, that's, that's significant, considering, you know.
More precisely, it's about an hour and twenty minutes, uh, but just in the first semester, which is also a little odd.
So, so we would change all the times for the second semester, which would really blow our minds.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Um, I have a question, oh, Maureen, were you done?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
Can we go Dr. Chase first, and then, then Ms. Housh, did?
Yeah, so, um, is there, I, I'm just curious, is the reason we couldn't start August tenth and eleventh as transition days and not start winter break until the twenty-third and then have it go through the fourth and the fifth in order to give some families that second week of August for, for, uh, for continued summer break, right? I mean, there are people who would really appreciate having that extra week to be able to, to do stuff.
Absolutely, you could look at that, but again, when we looked at the calendar, or when we heard from our teachers, one of the things they really requested, they had those fourteen to sixteen days off or two weeks total, and I know you'd adjust that a little bit on the other end in January.
That, that's an option for the board to consider. I, I think it's important, and you think, I think you've figured out the, the first big bottleneck in this calendar, which is making sure that there's somewhat of a balance between first and second semester. So if you're gonna take days away from the first semester, you have to find them somewhere else. And I, and I think you've identified that as a bottleneck, so that theoretically, you could move a couple of days from one end to the other end, yes.
And right now, that, that calendar specifically is balanced at eight, eighty-eight days apiece.
Okay, Ms. Housh.
Um, so do we have any notoriously high absentee days of kids and students because of a holiday right before? Um, that, while, while Thanksgiving is one of them that comes to mind, Halloween is another one, Super Bowl Sunday, um.
They all go to school on Halloween, every day after.
So, well, going to school on Halloween might be different for the kids than it is for the parents. Um, so I was just curious if we had, um, so my first question is curious if we had any options for stuff like that, where we have these very high absentee rates, because parents can't get up, or kids don't want to, there's sugar crash.
Excuse me, Dr. Warner. Dr. Warner? Can we hold that until Ms. Housh finishes?
So that's question one, and then the other question is, I know on this calendar, we have like three days off in one week in November, that's not the Thanksgiving week, I don't see that in the next two years. But to the extent that, just for childcare purposes and everything else, I've got some emails that have asked me to make sure that we're cognizant of that as well, so.
Yeah, we, we addressed the twenty-three, twenty-four school year by going to school on Monday, we're off for Election Day on Tuesday.
Right.
Then the end of the week, you have Veterans Day.
Right.
And the following year, we have, we do have a three-day week because we did add in a professional day, which we felt was important.
Okay.
And then the Election Day, but then Veterans Day moves to the Monday the following week.
I just need for us to be, yeah, the first question, then I'll, go ahead.
Yeah, absolutely, um, you bring up a great point, and I guess that becomes part of what our trade-offs are. We talk about hanging weeks, two days during a week is a hanging week, and that does create, sometimes you have families that will take off for the whole week of Thanksgiving. Dr. Taylor has stated, uh, Super Bowl Monday is a day that, you know, I'm sure a lot of people would like to take off.
I know, right.
But again, trying to find that balance to try to meet within the parameters to finish before the Memorial Day weekend and trying to get the total number of hours that we need. Again, thinking in there also that we may have some inclement weather.
Well, I'm hoping we have inclement weather, that's just me. So no, I appreciate that, and I also just, you know, for the purposes, looking at this, we don't have too many of the days, but it is hard for parents who are full-time working parents to have these, like, I'm taking Tuesday off from work, if you can't balance or juggle that, specifically if you're a single parent, you don't have the ability, we have a lot of military families, don't have family here to, to watch the kids for them so that they can go to work and do that. So I just want us all to be cognizant of that, I know you all are, but just as a reminder that trying to find childcare for multiple days off in a week that aren't consecutive is super hard. So I appreciate here that we, we do have to hon, we honor our federal holidays, particularly our Veterans Day, of course, and Election Day, but just some consideration for the parents that might be struggling with having to take that much time off from work.
Absolutely.
Cool.
Dr. Warner?
No, I always got in trouble for school for talking when I wasn't supposed to, too.
Well, yeah, I, it's not personal, it's just when we're trying to have one person speak, it's distracting and sometimes it's, you know, gets picked up and it's just better if we just have one person talk at a time, but I, I see you can write notes, so that works too. Ms. Sigmund?
I, my question was kind of piggybacking off what she said as far as high absentee dates, and I've been to several of these conversations, but I think that's one of the reasons why we have the twen, we start Christmas break on the twenty-first and twenty-second, is because it does look. we have the, we start Christmas break on the 21st and 22nd, is because it does look nice and neat to be out of school, or to be in school the 21st and 22nd, and then to give them back, you know, make them up in January, but then we have parents pulling their kids out and faculty and staff leaving, and then, you know, how do we handle that? So, I mean, I think that's part of how we decided on those dates, though.
Okay, any other, any other comments, Ms. Guy?
The only thing I wanted us to address was the same thing that I got in my emails about an educator asking if there's any way possible to have the entire Thanksgiving week off, but I do think it's, it's a give and take, well, you know, I don't, I don't see how we could take something away, so.
The only alternative would be to start earlier.
Which they don't want to.
Which, I know, I mean, I'm not suggesting it, but you either...
We can make that change if you'd like.
Well, this is...
But I wanted to mention it so they knew that we, we at least did consider it, and that's something that we had already thought about, but we can't, you know, we can't possibly...
Again, that's the trade-offs.
Well, that's the purpose of, you know, have this presentation, have this discussion. We have a public hearing this evening. We're not going to be voting on this until our November meeting, and I know we want to get it through, but if there's still a lot of questions or work being done on trying to accommodate some of these, if the board wants, it could be put off till December, and I'm sure that's not ideal, but, I mean, it is next year, so I'd be more willing to put that off than some of these other things that we have to take immediate action on. So if there's no other questions for Dr. Nichols, we will open the public hearing. The public hearing, we allow three minutes for each speaker or group. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation. If the spokesperson represents an organization, speakers should limit their comments to the subject of the 2023 and 2024, and 2024 to 2025 school calendars. That's because this is a public hearing on the calendars. When we finish this hearing, we'll go back to our regular meeting, at which time we have our general citizen comment. So this is strictly on these two proposed calendars. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Now, we have our, our practice, our policy in our general meetings that you have to sign up ahead of time. We did not write anything in that policy about the public hearings signing up ahead of time, so for that reason, the public comment here, we will begin with the people that signed up, but if there are other people who are here who wish to address the board on the calendars, you will be able to come forward and address the board. Ms. Hall, can you read the names of the persons who signed up in advance?
We have two people, Megan Gray, followed by Michelle Wickman.
Are either of those people here? Oh, I see Ms. Wickman. What, what was that first name, Ms. Hall?
Megan Gray.
Is Ms. Gray here? No? Well, Ms. Wickman, we'll start with you.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Taylor, my name is Michelle Wickman. I live in Hampton Oaks. I've got two kids in Stafford schools, and I teach at North Stafford High School. I'm speaking this evening as Stafford Education Association Secretary. On behalf of some common member concerns we would like to see addressed regarding on the calendar. First, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to provide input. We've encouraged our members to reach out and share their feedback as well, but these are some consistent issues that we've been asked to address. So the first thing would be inclusivity, which I saw that you've already made some changes in this direction, we appreciate that. Our school division consists of students and staff with a wide variety of religious affiliations. We ask that you keep this diversity in mind when developing the school calendar, because planning division-wide holidays that consistently favor one religion over another does not align with the board's commitment to keep an equitable, safe, and inclusive environment for staff and students. So right now, we've still got a four-day weekend over Easter, but I'm only saying, you know, we've got one day for Rosh Hashanah, one for the other days. Maybe we can spread the wealth a little bit there, make it a little more equitable. Work hours would be the second thing. So since teaser workdays and professional days are designated, it would be fabulous if you could also determine work hours at each level for those days and incorporate them into the employee work calendar. We heard from many educators who had to jump through some hoops recently to rearrange their schedules or cancel appointments due to the hours for parent-teacher conference day being altered with less than a month's notice. The practice of setting work hours for these days well in advance will allow educators to plan for what is expected of them, and it will ensure consistency between buildings at every level. We also would like you to consider employees with young children when planning for teacher workdays, professional days, and considering those work hours I just mentioned. Please keep in mind our staff, especially with young children. Indigenous Peoples' Day, I'm sorry, Indigenous Peoples' Day is a good example. Since this is a federal holiday, many daycares were closed, but educators in Stafford traditionally are at work that day. Please consider offering maybe division-sponsored childcare, or ensure alternate accommodations can be made for those educators who don't have a childcare option. Since not all staff have partners assisting them or access to alternate childcare as some do, as like Ms. Holstead was mentioning about our parents who have that same issue, we need to think of equitable solutions here. So offering an accommodation on the conference days for those educators would be helpful. Also, if you could work something so that educators who also have children in Stafford County schools are able to attend conferences for their own children, that would be much appreciated. Thank you again for the opportunity to provide input on this. We look forward to seeing the proposed calendars once you've gathered feedback from all stakeholders.
All right, is there anyone in the, the room who would like to address the calendars? Ms. Brown, if there's anyone else, if you could just line up on the sides, then we can just have you come right down.
Thank you. I'm Dana Brown, I'm from the Rock Hill District, and tonight I am here to ask you to please, please stop trying to snuff the joy out of our children's childhood, and that starts with fixing the school calendar. Let's be clear, this is a calendar for staff, not for parents, not for kids. I think that you're stealing the summer and you're stealing the spring break. Staff has them starting in the hottest part of summer, and the spring break occurs during meteorological winter. That's really great beach weather. And I'd like to know why you were only presented with one calendar choice for the next two years. You only received a pre-Labor Day calendar with no other options. Who thought that it was a good idea to endanger the staff or kids like that? Staff would like the kids to start August 8th next year and August 6th the year after that, again, when it's super hot. Do you or staff need to be reminded that the staff convocation was August 5th this year, one day before you're proposing school to start? You had staff and teachers wailing that it was wrong of you to force them on extremely hot school buses and make them go outside to attend convocation. I think every news outlet in the DC area ran the story that it was dangerously hot here. EMS treated staff at the scene due to heat sickness, and some were taken to the hospital. Staff were so traumatized, they even demanded extra money from taxpayers to compensate them for the heat and trauma they endured, you know, pain and suffering. If it's too hot for the staff to be outside, and too hot for the staff to be on school buses, then it's probably too hot for our kids. I don't know what's so hard to figure out about that. Oddly, the same aggrieved employees gave you the new August 6th start date for kids. That's pretty hypocritical. I remember a few years back, staff said, "Oh, we need to start school early so we can match all the surrounding counties like Prince William for first day of school and spring break, for the convenience of our teachers and childcare." Well, that didn't happen. That was fake. Fake, fake, fake. And those surveys, also mostly fake. And I say this as a former member of the calendar committee for several years. I don't know, I've been around long enough to remember the former Garrisonville School Board member caught staff stuffing ballot boxes. It's in your minutes. Please fix this. Do the right thing for the kids. You represent the parents and the voters, not the staff, unless they happen to be residents here. The superintendent represents staff. And it's possible to do the calendar like that, we've did it for at least 22 years. And I noticed you added a bunch of new religious holidays, yet we're still calling Christmas winter break, so maybe we need to fix that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, and this is slated to come back in November, which is our next meeting for a vote. So if anyone has any comments, please feel free to send them an email to the school boards on the website, is that the correct address, Ms. Hall? And that will get to all the school board members. All right. That brings us to our meeting agenda. Too much paper here. Oh, you took my meeting agenda.
No, you have mine.
Oh, thank you.
I'll read it.
I guess we will. Call to order, once again. We don't need an authorization to participate electronically. Ms. Hall, will you do the roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Guy?
Here.
Ms. Holstead?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Sigmund?
Here.
And Dr. Warner?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval of the agenda, Dr. Chase?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve the agenda with two amendments. The first to, we were sent two sets of minutes yesterday morning, and I have not had an opportunity to look at them, so I would like those to be removed and, and returned to the agenda next month. And then I would like item 3.06 moved from consent to action.
Okay. Would you mind giving us the specifics for those agendas, so it's clear?
Yeah, let me find them, hold on a second. So under consent, yeah, it's 3.01, and I believe it's, Ms. Hall will have to be, I believe it's September 27th and October 4th? Yeah. And then 3.06 for action approval of the award of contract for water fountain testing.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Chase, second by Ms. Sigmund, any discussion? All in favor of the motion for the revised agenda? Please say, oh, I'm sorry. Tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that brings us to the consent items. Do we have a motion for approval of the revised consent?
Motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
Okay, there's a motion by Dr. Warner?
Second.
Second by Ms. Holstead? I thought I heard you, Ms. Guy.
I was telling, I was encouraging.
Oh. How supportive. Thank you, Ms. Holstead and Ms. Guy. All right, no discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion carries unanimously. It brings us to presentations, ah, the favorite time of year. 4.01, 2022 Band Together to Fight Hunger fundraising event, or should we say this is also a food-raising event?
Good evening, Chair Healy, Vice Chair Randall, members of the board, and Dr. Taylor. My name is Debbie Pickrell, and I am the coordinator of this year's Band Together to Fight Hunger. On behalf of our five high school band parent associations, I am very proud to introduce you to the drum majors of our five high school bands for the 12th Annual Band Together to Fight Hunger. Our band leaders, our band leadership includes Emma Board, drum major at Brookpoint High School, Nicole Simpson, and Ivana DeLeom Cassis, drum majors at Colonial Forge High School, Sydney Shore, drum major at Mountain View High School, Josh Novak, drum major at North Stafford High School, Claire, Clara Jacob, and Lydia Zambon, drum majors at Stafford High School. These outstanding musicians have a very special message for you and our community.
We are here tonight to cordially invite each, each of you to join us on Tuesday, November 1st at 7:00 PM for the 12th anniversary of Band Together to Fight Hunger. If it should rain, this event will be held on Monday, November 7th. Gates open at 5:30 PM, so you have plenty of time to drop off your donations and enjoy dinner while you wait for the performances to begin at 7:00. We hope you are all planning to attend and join us. Band Together to Fight Hunger is an exciting showcase of talented musicians from our five high schools. This is the only event during the year, and in less than two hours, you have the opportunity to hear and see all five high school marching bands in concert and give back to our community at the same time. Our event supports a Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, which services the counties, our fellow students, faculty, and support staffers item. Stafford, Spotsylvania, Caroline, King George, Locust Grove, and the city of Fredericksburg.
Non-perishable food donations and monetary donations are gladly accepted. Monetary donations can be made by mailing a check to Band Together at Mountain View High School or through our online donation page. You can find the link from the Band Together social media pages. In the last 11 years, we've provided over 300,000 meals. This year, our goal is to provide over 45,000 meals for citizens in our area. Our Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank is the storehouse for the food and other products collected. These items are then distributed to our local food pantries and other programs in our communities. They are seeing more of our neighbors than ever. Parents who've lost work or had a reduction in hours, their children going to bed on an empty stomach, and retired seniors unable to afford groceries. But we can help if we, as a community, band together to fight hunger. Last quarter alone, the food bank distributed 1,642,687 pounds of food, which served over close to 20,000 of our neighbors. By collaborating with the food bank, we can reach more people in need through their, through their many partnerships and business connections. It's incredible that we are able to touch the lives of so many adults and children in all these surrounding counties by giving back for just one night.
After our on-field presentation to the Fredericksburg Regional Food Bank, attendees will be treated to the grand finale, where all of our bands will band together to fight hunger. 400-plus high school band students on the field playing together is pretty amazing. This year, we are also excited to honor our military families and students as November is Military Family Month with a newly commissioned work that was written especially for our school division in our event. It is an arrangement of all the military service songs and is the first to include the sixth service, Space Force. We have invited military musicians in the community to celebrate with us, as well as SCPS graduates who are currently serving in our military music ensembles. It's also one of the halliots of our season.
The need in our community is real. We hope you will join us in this campaign to fight food insecurity in our community with your monetary or non-perishable food donation. Thank you for your time this evening and your continued commitment to our band programs. We look forward to seeing you on Tuesday, November 1st at 7:00 PM at Mountain View
If anyone has not been to this event, I strongly urge you to go. Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were done.
I just have one more thing. I would like to invite you guys to North Stafford's 40th Annual Invitational that's happening this Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00, if you would like to come.
Thank you.
Is that outside or inside?
Outside.
Outside, okay, thank you. Oh, the Turf Field Stadium, right? All right, back to my editorial. This is, other than graduation, I think my favorite event of the year. It is absolutely amazing. If you haven't gone, please try to go. Encourage your friends and neighbors, they don't have to have kids in school, to come. I mean, if you bring food, that's even better, but it's not a requirement. And this military thing sounds so exciting. Wow, it's another, another first for Stafford County. So, and I knew Dr. Taylor's got that on his calendar, right? The whole family's coming? When he, when he came onboard last December, I said, "Wait till next November." It'd be great. All right, that brings us to the postgraduate programs showcase.
All right, good evening. All right, good evening, Madam Chair, school board, Dr. Taylor. We have an awesome treat for you this evening, where we would like to take some time to showcase our post-grad program. We have a former intern, as well as his mom is here this evening, that is going to share their experience with the post-grad program here in Stafford County. And please keep in mind that the post-grad program is one piece to transition planning for our students with disabilities, but it is a big piece because it's a time where we provide our students with real-life application of their skills to be contributing members of society. So with that being said, I want to hand it off to my Assistant Director, Annie Viana Uebe, and our Transition Coordinator, Bethany Ventura.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. Good evening, school board members, Madam Chair, Dr. Taylor. Transition is such an important part of our students' lives, even our youngest learners. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous up here, but I told myself, just talk about it. You talk about transition all the time. Our transition focuses on education, employment, individual, independent living, and transition. Our students and our schools are encouraged to go on community-based instruction trips so that our students with disabilities get real-life experiences within our community. Partnering with our Parent Teacher Resource Center, we host events that showcase our postgraduate programs and connect our families with outside resources. Stafford County currently has three postgraduate programs. They are housed at Stafford High School, Brookpoint High School, and Colonial Forge. Our instructor from Stafford High School, Kate Diedrich, is here with us tonight. The goal of this program is to help our students gain daily living and workplace readiness skills that are necessary for them after high school. These students spend a significant amount of time in the community learning on the job. Recently, we've been able to partner with departments within Stafford County schools like our preschools, ADM, our technology department, and nutrition services to have our students learn while they're here with us. This month, our students will even go to Dr. Taylor's office and to other offices within this building to shadow our administrative assistants to learn some clerical skills. These partnerships have actually led to some of our students being hired directly by Stafford County schools. Another program that we are really proud of is our Project Search program. Our instructor, Heather Pribble, she's here with us, too. Project Search is a nationwide program that helps students with disabilities transition into competitive employment. Our program is a partnership between the Department of Aging and Rehabilitative Services, RSVP, the Virginia Department of Education, and Mary Washington Healthcare. Our interns go to Mary Washington Healthcare every single day, and they rotate between three internships throughout the year within the hospital. Some of our students have been hired by Mary Washington, and then they've come back and been the mentors for our current interns. So it's really great to see it kind of come full circle. Other students have been hired within the community, and some, again, here with Stafford County schools. Most of our interns have gained competitive employment by the time that they have finished their third rotation with Mary Washington.
I have the easiest part of this entire presentation because it is my absolute pleasure to introduce to you all a former Project Search intern, Joel Zaraski, and his mother, Amy, and they're going to come up and share a few words about their experience with the program.
Hello. My name is Joel Zaraski. Thank you for allowing me to talk with you. I can talk, but can be hard to understand. So this program helps me. I work at Vochelli Pizza. I prep marinara cups and pizza boxes two days a week. I graduated from Stafford High School in 2019. I attended the Project Search program at Mary Washington Hospital in the 2020-2021 school year. Here are some areas where I interned. The medical imaging department, volunteer services, the gift shop for the emergency department, the cafeteria, and engineering services. I learned so many skills. I learned to follow my mentor's directions. I also learned life skills like basic math and reading, how to take my work seriously, and how to be part of a team. The SCPS Project Search team also worked with me on interviewing skills. I loved working. The job coach who worked with us at Project Search helped me get my iPad programmed for my interview for Vochelli. And guess what? I got the job. I have been working there since July 2021. Is there anything you would like to know about? I love Project Search. I felt like I was like everyone else going to their job. Everyone expected a lot of me, and I surprised myself with what I learned. Now I can make money and buy things myself, just like all of you. Is there anything you would like to know about my time with Project Search?
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Sigmund.
I was just curious which assignment in Mary Washington you liked best out of all of them.
What's your favorite?
Daniel.
What department?
Engineering.
Ah.
Daniel, Dee, where, Lee, my favorite, big cupcake.
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question. What pizza do you recommend? Which one do you like?
I like Daniel, Mike.
Oh, he's telling me who that is, sorry.
Me, 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 Cam. And second one, I can my paycheck full time.
First paycheck.
Yeah, and me, my payroll on.
Yep.
And first day of work.
Congratulations.
Rice, rice, yeah, rice, owl.
Okay, all right, he's going to take the show. Thank you.
So, thank you all very much. One last plug that I wanted to give is we are hosting an I'm Determined event on March 4th at Mountain View High School. Please mark your calendars. We are going to be sending out a save the date to the community for our families and students, and it is going to be pre-K to 12-inclusive, and we're very, very excited about this event. If you don't know about I'm Determined, please go and research it. It is a video-run program that actually provides students with the supports they need to essentially run their own IEP meeting and run the goals of what they want to do in their lives and their careers. So we're really excited about it. March 4th, Mountain View High School. Let me know if you have any questions, and thank you all very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Hammer. All right, that brings us to the presentation of the Bullying Month. I'm sorry, no, the first recognition of the Bryant family for their lifesaving CPR efforts. Ms. Osborne.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Taylor. This evening, we will recognize students, staff, and community members that epitomize our values of students, integrity, respect, community, opportunity, and excellence. Tonight, we recognize students Angelia Bryant, Aomy Lee Coleman, Nani Perez, Kaylee Ukika, Amelia Nix, and John Hatzis, as well as our very own Director of Programming, Mr. Lionel White. At this time, will Angelia, Aomy Lee, and Nani please come forward? The school system is deeply inspired by the quick thinking of three students who used training they received in school to help save a life. In what has been described as a joint effort, Colonial Forge Jr., Angelia Bryant, alongside her nieces, Aomy Lee Coleman and Nani Perez of Winding Creek Elementary School, worked together to save the life of a loved one experiencing a frightening medical emergency. On September 13th, Aomy Lee and Nani observed their grandmother, Charlesie, in distress and in need of immediate attention. Both girls reacted quickly and rushed to alert Angelia's father, Keenan, who then alerted Angelia. Remaining calm and coaching her father to assist, Angelia began performing the CPR techniques she learned last year in her health and PE class at Colonial Forge to administer aid to her grandmother until paramedics arrived. In addition to being honored by the school division, Angelia, Aomy Lee, and Nani are all being recognized by the American Heart Association. Angelia is also joining the organization as an ambassador and has been nominated for the Lifesavers Award. Joining me to present this honor is Ms. Marjorie Churchburn of the American Heart Association.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having me with you. Yes, my name is Marjorie Churchburn. I'm the proud heart partner to Stafford County Schools. It is my great honor to present Ms. Angelia Bryant with our American Heart Association Heart Savers Award for your heroic effort in helping to save your grandma. Also, really quickly, I just have to say I had the great honor of meeting with Dr. Taylor over the summer. He is a wonderful advocate and supporter of our mission of American Heart Association. He himself chose our challenge this year to be kind to his heart and others. He invited me to his principal's meeting and another Stafford County first. Every principal there took the challenge as well. So it looks like we're going to be able to bring the program to every school in Stafford, and we're going to be able to create a community of lifesavers here. Thank you for your leadership. You are receiving our Heart of Gold Superintendent Award, Dr. Taylor.
Oh, nice.
I'd also like to point out that Grandma is here tonight.
Yay.
trust their instincts and the presence of mind to help in a time of need. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations.
At this time, we'll read the proclamation to declare October 2022 as Bullying Prevention Month. Here to accept the proclamation is Olga Escobar, Project Manager at Stafford Junction. A proclamation to recognize October 2022 as Bullying Prevention Month. Whereas school bullying has become an increasingly significant and prevalent problem throughout the Commonwealth and the nation, and whereas it is estimated that more than 20% of America's youth are involved in bullying each year, either as a victim or as an aggressor, and as whereas bullying can assume many forms, including verbal, physical, emotional, and cyber, and can happen both on and off school grounds. And whereas it is important for all Stafford County parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of and address bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas leadership must clearly communicate that unsafe or harmful behavior is clearly unacceptable and that the code of conduct will be upheld, and whereas everyone in a position of leadership is responsible for modeling consistent, respectful behavior and for intervening to address unsafe behavior. And whereas any person who feels threatened, upset, or endangered by someone's behavior or receives this happening to someone else has both the right and responsibility to speak up, now, therefore, be it proclaimed, that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates October 2022 as Bullying Prevention Month throughout the school division and encourages all schools and community members to join in this recognition. Adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this 11th day of October 2022. October is National Bullying Prevention Month, and Stafford Schools is pleased to announce the winners of our very first anti-bullying campaign. The campaign took place in mid-September and was open to the entire school division. At this time, will Kaylee, Amelia, and John please come forward?
Stephanie? Can we ask Mr. Johnson?
Participants were given the prompt, "How does Stafford Schools create a world without bullying?" In response to this question, elementary students were invited to design a poster. Middle school students were invited to create a video, and high school participants were invited to write an essay. At this time, we would like to announce the elementary, middle, and high school winners. Kaylee Ukika, 3rd grader at Conway Elementary School, will be presented a $50 check from the Stafford Education Foundation. Amelia Nix, 8th grader at T. Benton Gale Middle School, will save $100 for her video submission.
That was so good.
And John Hatzis, a senior at Mountain View High School, will receive $250 for his essay. Stafford Schools appreciates all students who participated in this campaign. We received many great entries from our talented students. Thank you for your commitment to a safe, inclusive learning environment for all. for providing the awards for this competition.
Thank you, Stephanie.
At this time, we will recognize Mr. Lionel White, Directors of Facility Planning and Geographic Information Systems. Mr. White's accuracy in projecting the Stafford County Public Schools enrollment for 2022-2023 school year. Student enrollment is the foundation of school planning. School districts rely on enrollment projections to anticipate future needs and plan accordingly. Enrollment projections are crucial for staffing, budgeting, and classroom allocations. Additionally, the projections are imperative for the preparation of the construction improvement plan the School Board submits annually to the County Board of Supervisors. Mr. White projected an enrollment of 30,615 students. On September 30th, enrollment was 30,622 students, a difference of only 7 students, or .02%. To put this in perspective, the industry standard suggests... the industry standard suggests at least 98% accuracy or 2% error for a one-year system-wide projection. Stafford was 99.98% accurate. A standard used by many planners is that at least 80%, four out of five individual schools, are 95% accurate or better. Stafford achieved 90%, 27 out of 30 schools, which is 10% higher than the goal. Last year's one-year projections exceeded the industry standard for system-wide accuracy and standard for individual school accuracy. Mr. White's insights, reliability, and knowledge have proven time and again to be keen, and he is acutely attuned to the growth in Stafford County. Please join me in extending a thank you and appreciation to Mr. White for a job well done. Thank you.
That brings us to citizen comments. Three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. Speakers are encouraged to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. Speakers shall identify themselves by name and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairperson. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public Schools Policy 1113, Public Complaints. Ms. Hall, can you confirm the number of people that have signed up?
Yes, ma'am, it's 15.
15, alright, there's 15 people that have signed up. I'm going to ask Ms. Hall to call the first four and then call each four after that. We'll end up with three. But if you couldn't line up, because we do have a number of citizens commenting, I'd like to keep it moving forward. So if you call the first four...
Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate it.
Sean Van Lavender, Bryce Baxter, Bridget Farrell Kuzma, and Lucia Jimenez.
You can pull the microphone down so you don't... It's never comfortable.
My name is Lucia Jimenez. I live in the District Falmouth. I'm an eighth grader at Dixon Smith Middle School. I'm here to support the custodial workers in our schools. They need to be treated fairly and with dignity. Everyone needs to earn a living wage. Cleaners make our surroundings beautiful and make us safe from diseases. Cleaners should be respected and valued. They should be part of the family. My mom is a cleaner.
Thank you. Alright, who was the second person?
Mr. Baxter? No?
Third?
Move on?
Yes.
Next is Sarah Taylor, Katherine Faismeyer, Stephanie Hughes, and Ezra Jackson.
Bridget Farrell Kuzma. I'm here tonight as an exasperated and enraged parent expressing an imminent safety danger. I live in the Easternview neighborhood directly across Garrisonville Road from North Stafford High School. My concerns are all related to the safety of children, all students at North Stafford High School. I have four children. This is our sixth year having children who walk to the high school. Every year I have expressed safety concerns about the ongoing daily pedestrian safety and traffic situations. I am frustrated with the ongoing lack of solutions or answers I have received from various organizations about these children's safety. Two weeks ago, I conducted my own traffic observations in the morning. I sat close to the intersection of Joyce Street and Garrisonville Road Monday through Friday from 6:55 a.m. to 7:35 a.m. to provide you data of what occurs. On average during that morning timeframe each day, more than 17 vehicles make a right turn out of the high school campus with children in the crosswalk. These children are walking in the crosswalk with the crosswalk light when cars turn in front of them. The pedestrians obviously have the legal right of way. The drivers have signs reminding them of laws which state to yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. Yielding to pedestrians does not mean stopping just before you hit them. I cannot begin to express the emotions I experience when I see a car almost hit a high school or walking in the crosswalk. I have directly contacted Stafford Schools Transportation when I have witnessed school buses turn into and through the crosswalk with pedestrians present. This school year, I reported such occurrences directly witnessed by me or experienced by one of my children as a pedestrian on August 10th, August 23rd, September 19th, and October 5th. That is four times in nine weeks, and those are only the occurrences of which I'm aware. In 2018, when similar situations occurred and I reached out to Stafford Schools Transportation, the then Director of Transportation made the decision to alter the exit route for all buses at North Stafford High School during arrival and dismissal time for students. That change was obviously not permanent, and here we are with vehicles to include school buses endangering pedestrians in the crosswalk. Now, the sticking point with the Sheriff's Office and Stafford Schools Transportation seems to be the location of the pedestrians in the crosswalk, and even specifically on which side of the median the pedestrians are. To be clear, there are pedestrians in the crosswalk, and they have the right of way. I have heard from both the Sheriff's Office and Stafford Schools Transportation about what is reasonable and a reasonable solution that fits all needs. How have we gone from watching out for pedestrians and protecting them to discussing their precise location in the crosswalk and doing what is reasonable for all parties? What is reasonable is whatever it takes for a pedestrian to not be injured and for vehicles to follow established traffic laws. I have been told that communication has been sent to all bus drivers reminding them of existing laws and to watch for pedestrians. Given I've witnessed this repeatedly during this school year, including after said communication has been sent, this communication to drivers is ineffective, and there are still pedestrians in danger every day. Two of them are mine. I have shared data that shows the risk to students. I implore you to join me in a call to action to protect our children. A call to action for safety is the only reasonable answer. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sarah Taylor from Falmouth District. My comment is about the unofficial policy that requires gender expansive students to have a Gender Support Plan, or GSP, in place before staff may honor their name and pronoun requests. This is my 21st year as a teacher and my 12th at North Stafford. I actually graduated from North in '95, so I've been in Stafford Schools for an accumulated 20 years. In those two decades, I've seen little evidence to support the idea that anyone involved in SCPS has the intention to harm any of our students. However, as every parent and educator knows, good intentions do not prevent us from doing harm. And that's how I see this unofficial policy. Harmful despite good intentions. It's harmful to the gender expansive students regardless of whether or not they have support at home because it others them. It sends the message that they are so unusual, so different, so dangerous to themselves and others that their teachers need to report them to their counselors, and they need to negotiate a contract just to be called by the name they choose. Gender-normative students don't need to go through this process to be called by their nicknames. This is a rule only for one group of students, the gender expansive students. I'm sure you already know what it's called when one group is targeted for prejudicial treatment. And that would put this unofficial policy in direct violation of federal law, state law, and our own adopted non-discrimination policy. Furthermore, it forces teachers to participate as accomplices in the discrimination against gender expansive students. In other words, this rule forces us to bully our students. And that's just not something a lot of us are willing to do. And I truly believe it's not what you intend, given that this is Bullying Prevention Month. You've all been great about reaching out to the teachers to ask us how the board and admin can help us do our jobs and help us stay in Stafford. This rule will push even more teachers out of this county and into the counties where the school boards have already taken the step of announcing that they reject the governor's anti-trans model policy with which Stafford's unofficial policy has some unfortunate commonalities. I'm not pretending that you have an easy job when it comes to this issue. I can see where you will be in a position to be sued either way. Teachers are very familiar with being in no win situations. So the advice I give you is based on many years of experience. When you're stuck between a rock and a hard place, choose what's best for the students. All of the students, always. So please, members of the board and Dr. Taylor, please reevaluate this unofficial policy. Thank you.
Can you call the names following this speaker, please?
Yes. Stephanie, I think I called Ms. Hughes, Ezra Jackson, Brenda Edwards, Rowan Kuzma, Beau Bellotti, and Clifford Heinzler.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Taylor. The first thing I want to say is I agree we should be protecting all students. And that means all students, not just the ones who like to identify with a certain group of people. So I'm here tonight to talk about the dangers of transgenderism in our schools. We've been talking about the dangers of putting an agenda before an education. We talked about negatively affecting our students by confusing them with harmful indoctrination techniques. If you don't believe this is harmful and indeed indoctrination, here are a couple examples. If you do not agree with every talking point, you are transphobic. If you do not wish to change in the same bathroom or locker room as someone of the opposite sex, you are a bigot. If you're uncomfortable with men, with all the anatomy that goes along with the title, walking into a woman's locker room, you are creating stigma, and you are the problem in society. We're no longer talking about how to help transgender students. We're talking about how to give them everything they want at the expense of the 98% of students who do not conform with this new group. When I'm required to change in the same room as a girl because they identify as a man, that makes me feel uncomfortable. I can't imagine how a girl feels changing in the same room as someone with a penis. Like, that's awful. Many people may not know this, but many doors at Colonial Forge are labeled with one of these. It has a website on it, and that website encourages students to join gender and sexuality alliances and encourages them to work with pride festivals, which often promote kink and sexual experimentation. This website recommends teachers to ask students when they come out to them if it's a secret they're keeping from their parents. We have this up in our schools. Does that make you uncomfortable? Because as a student, I'm uncomfortable. And that's what we're encouraging. Every time I walk into a classroom, my religious beliefs are being pressured. If a Christian symbol were to be put up in a classroom, that teacher would be violating laws regarding what teachers can say, do, and display. Teacher puts symbols up that are clearly pushing a political agenda under the guise of inclusivity. It's seen as normal and encouraged. It terrifies me that schools can so willingly push this. I went to a gender and sexuality education club at my school recently, or the Sage Club. The guest speaker encouraged students to explore their sexuality and gender at school because schools are supposed to be safe places. Well, I disagree. Schools should be places of learning where students can go to seek truth and learn about the complexities of science, math, history, and English, rather than the complexities of sexuality. I will list a couple of signs that are associated with groomers. Encouraging students to come to them with issues that do not pertain to the subject taught. Desensitizing communication regarding sexual topics. Targeting a student's particular vulnerabilities. You know who fits this description? A teacher who's no longer teaching at Colonial Forge. We'll just say that. A man who let his students know that they could come and talk to him about anything that they're questioning. A man who had a BDSM relationship with a 12-year-old girl on the internet. So I'm running low on time, so I just want to remind you guys to protect our parents, defend our bathrooms, and keep the parents involved. Thank you.
Next speaker, can come on down, please.
Hey, thank you very much. First of all, I just want to say that I sincerely appreciate that this board in particular is a place where you all listen. We sincerely appreciate that, and there are level heads, and you consider everything to be said. We don't always have to agree with it, and that's okay. But I appreciate that. That is a wonderful thing. So I'm Brenda Edwards. I teach art at Stafford High School. And I am here to discuss Yonkin's transgender youth policy, specifically not the policy that was passed by Stafford County. I am asking that the board please consider rejecting this, as many other counties have in the state of Virginia already, for various reasons, but most specifically because as teachers, we are your front lines, and we need to be able to show the respect and the support to our students that you expect us to show to them on a daily basis. Every single student, every single day. So when kids walk into my class on day one, I tell them, "The number one rule in here, and the most important rule that I really need you to remember, is respect. I need you to show respect for everybody in here. I don't care what they look like. I don't care how they dress. I don't care how they talk, and I don't care what their belief system is. You don't have to agree with them. You just have to show respect for who they are as a person." This is what I am asking you to allow us the ability to do. So I understand that there's a big rush and a big push in one direction or another, but we are simply asking you to slow down and please consider what this would actually do in the county and specifically what this would do in a classroom when I need to look at a child and I need to say, "I am sorry, that's not something that we're allowed to talk about here." And the reason that that is an issue is because if we are sending a trans student to counseling, you are immediately implying that there is a mental issue there specifically because they're trans. And if we are saying that a student that is trans cannot go by their nickname because it is associated with being trans, however Bobby can go by Bubba because that has nothing to do with being trans, that is an issue. At that point in time, we are targeting a group of students, and that is something we do need to consider. So I know that you are all intelligent, wonderful people, and I know that you simply want the best for what our students have in this school system. You try every day to provide them with that. And I'm simply asking that you please consider this because if we can't provide them with a safe space, we've provided them with nothing. So please, for the sake of being kind and respectful to our students, please reject that policy. Thank you.
What an incredibly hard act to follow. That was eloquently put. But as some of you may know, today is National Coming Out Day. It is also LGBTQ History Month. It is also Bullying Prevention Month. So what a better day for me to make my return to this board. Actually, the first time I addressed this board was in 2017 as a high schooler. I graduated from Colonial Forge in 2018. I had a student threaten my life because I was trans and then bring a knife to school the next day. And after that, I decided that queer and trans youth like me deserved better. And I decided to do my political and civic duty and come to these school board meetings. And I did so for a full school year and a half until I graduated and even after I entered college to come back when you all voted on the anti-discrimination policy. So I'm incredibly dedicated to this, and I just want to share my thoughts as a previous student and as someone who works in legislation now. We know through numerous studies and surveys that supporting trans youth improves their academic and mental health outcomes. I know this to be true because I lived it. I had teachers that were both supportive and unsupportive. I've had teachers use my name and pronouns. And being my true self in their classrooms allowed me to focus on my learning. I had 21 absences my senior year. And a lot of that had to do with this bullying that I experienced. And through studies, we actually know that this is not uncommon for trans youth. It impacts their entire life trajectory, whether it's a lower GPA and therefore not getting into college and eventually leading to other outcomes such as our heightened risk of living below the poverty line. And you all have a very special duty and responsibility to make sure that these students are on the best possible life trajectory, as you do with each student, right? So I'm just asking that you oppose these policies and that you provide teachers with real clarity and transparency around exactly what you're asking them to do because they deserve that, so that way they can speak and honor trans students. Yeah, so I'm trying to think if there's anything else I had to say. I also just, very quickly, I know it's rude and improper to address previous speakers, so I'm not doing that. so I'm not doing that, but trans experiences have actually existed, as far as we know, as long as written language, whether we're talking about the ancient Greece, pre-colonial indigenous people. The transgenderism, which isn't like a real thing, as it's not an ideology, instead it's a innate sense of oneself, is actually predates the colonial ideals that we understand today. So, with that in mind, I hope that you will support trans youth.
Could you give us your name, please? I don't think-
Bo Bellotti, any pronouns.
Thank you.
My name is Rowan Kuzma, and I'm currently a sophomore at North Stafford High School. I live in the Eastern View neighborhood, directly across 610 from the high school. Every morning, I walk to school, and each morning I use the crosswalk, there's normally at least one car that turns in front of me as it exits the high school. On some occasions, some buses have even turned in front of me when I'm in the crosswalk. I'm always legally using the crosswalk when I have the light to walk across. I have the legal right of way as a pedestrian in the crosswalk. I'm sharing this information because I'm always worried that a vehicle will hit me as it turns out of the high school. There are also cars that turn around in our neighborhood, either in driveways or intersections, and sometimes three-point turns in the road. These cars turn around in our neighborhood because they don't want to wait for the light to turn left into the high school. I don't feel safe when this happens because I'm worried those drivers won't be paying attention and will hit me as they back up on the road in my neighborhood when I'm walking to school. My brother is a senior at North Stafford. He has sports practice and couldn't make it here tonight, so he has asked me to share his thoughts. Walking to school every morning, I come too close for comfort to cars in the crosswalk on the daily. Without fail, at least one car turns in front of me in the crosswalk after I'm already on the side of the school on the road. It becomes a problem when two or three cars do this and turn so close to me that I feel like I can just reach out and touch them. Recently, I was crossing and got almost entirely to the other side. I was probably 10 feet away from the other edge of the road, and a car tried to turn right into me. Luckily, it slammed on its brakes right before it would have hit me. I believe this problem stems from the light turning out of the school being green while the crosswalk light is on. Once one car turns at the green light, the one behind them assumes that it's safe to go, and the next one in the next, because the light is green. They all just go because they see the ones in front of them go, because there are cars in front of them, they can't even see the crosswalk to know that there are people walking. I'm the person in the crosswalk they don't see and then almost hit. This situation feels dangerous every morning.
Madam Chair, after Mr. Heinzler will be Deborah Snyder, Steve Robson, and Dwayne Edwards.
Good evening. I'm Cliff Heinzler. I'm the chair of the Stafford County Democratic Committee, and I just wanted to come to the board this evening to remind you that we need to seek a permanent solution to the plight of our custodial workers. And it's not lost upon me that with the decision of ABM to withdraw, you have a challenge right now, there are contracting issues, there are hiring requirements, and you have to keep the schools clean and safe in the interim. But I'd like to keep focused on a permanent solution, which involves bringing our custodial workers back in, fully into the family of the public schools as they once were. And therein will lie your permanent solution, when the custodial workers are once again employees of the county. Thank you so much for your time.
I agree with the last speaker. I went Friday to get a Freedom of Information Act request. Wanted you guys to know, I, I don't think I need, need to say anything, but it was for the school system to request an access to ABM's, how ABM is handling the contract that they have. And I received, Monday I received an email from Dr. Stempel saying that none, none is on record. In other words, no news is good news. In other words, ABM is, to me, as a taxpayer, seems to be going along just fine when we know for certain that is far from the truth, and so, that can't be, because I know that labor laws are, are being trampled on, and, and also a public health situation. Now, we all think that COVID is a thing of the past. I don't know. But if, if, if it should happen, God forbid that a variant comes to town and affects our children in school, we need the staff to keep our schools sanitized, and it's the custodial workers wish themselves to do a much better job, and ABM has, almost prevented them from doing so by not equipping them properly, either with suitable clothing for the, for sanitary commission, conditions, or, or even supplies. So, so, things have not changed. I wish, I'll have to stop here, but, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Robson. I teach in the Department of Modern Languages and Literatures at the University of Mary Washington. There are many close connections between the University of Mary Washington and the Stafford school system. Many of our students are graduates of the Stafford schools. Tonight, I met one of your teachers, who was my student at the University of Mary Washington a few years ago. And as everyone knows, a custodial staff at Mary Washington or any college is essential to the healthy and proper functioning of a university or a school. And this means that the staff should receive adequate compensation and fair working conditions. It's only common sense. The proposal for the new contract that I saw today seems eminently fair. $15 an hour, 40-hour a week. I know that most people in here are probably aware of that, and that this, this should be, as they say, a no-brainer. But I also want to address the decision to turn over the administration of the custodial staff to a private company. Some years ago at Mary Washington, the same thing was done to our food services. The food services were turned over to a private company, and staff members report that the promises, the conditions for working and the compensation that were made by the university have not been honored by this private company. And the students report that the food quality has deteriorated, something that I can confirm myself, having eaten occasionally at the dining halls. If a private company is contracted to administer the custodial staff, or any function of an institution, it must be carefully monitored with appropriate remedies for financial and labor abuses. This has not happened here, clearly. So, I am agreeing with the previous speaker that the custodial services should be brought back under the administration of the Stafford County school system. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, Dwayne Edwards?
Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Taylor, my name is Dwayne Edwards. I'm the vice chair of the Virginia Organized State Governing Board, and I want to say a little bit over a year ago, we was, we had brought a issue of, a lady found out was a cleaning worker at ABM, she was talking about how her, how she was being treated on the job. Now, as I was talking to this young lady, she also informed me that she had worked at a school in Stafford, that it was only one person being cleaning, cleaning the school in the evening. And I'm, I live in Spotsylvania, but both of my daughters are Stafford County students. And so, that was a little shocking, and so, as we started speaking more, and another thing about Virginia organized, I talked to a lot of people in the community, but as you can probably tell, I'm not bilingual, right? So, and then we finally had somebody in our group that was very bilingual, and so, we was able to have communication with a big segment of people in Stafford County that actually ended up working in the same schools, and they all had the same issue with this company. And then we found out this company had been cleaning schools for 15 years. So, and so, this is not something new. And then when I, we talked with teachers, and they, they always complain about having to do extra cleaning in their classrooms. And then as we dig more with over this year, we're going to find out that the company doesn't have enough cleaning supplies. And then, so, everybody's speculating about PPE loans, what business has got money, but they, $5.9 million was paid to them, or being paid to them for this contract. So, I'm pretty sure they should have had the finances for cleaning supplies and personnel, regardless if there's a spike in, in employment or a drop in employment. $5.9 million, give me $5.9 million. I'll make sure, we got boots on the ground. That's what I do. You know what I mean? Come on, Doc, come on. All right, so, what, I mean, I really want us to really get into this, because the people that you have cleaning the school system, they have pride in their work. I mean, I didn't know. I didn't know, I actually look at them more when I go in other buildings because of the crew that you have through this contracting company. Now, I know my time is short. If we can't hire these people at Stafford County and protect them under fair wages and all of that, as we should, then we still need to hold the companies who are doing business in Stafford County to the standard that y'all have. We're in a government area, and I did, I did a big board construction, government contract, so Mavis Beacon. You can't work on a military base and pay your workers at a certain pay. So, we had a company here, had a job here, we paid them 10, or $15. We did a project on Chronicle. We had to raise everybody to $25 because they was on base. Thank you.
Can you call the final speaker, Ms. Hall, please?
That was it.
Oh, that was it? All right. That closes the citizen comment period, brings us to action items. Item 7.01, second slash final review and adoption of amendments to policy 1701, strategic planning. Do we have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Randall, second by Dr. Warner. Any discussion? No? I'd like to thank Dr. Taylor and your team and all the members of the community who contributed to the strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Look forward to seeing the results.
Final product, yeah.
Yes.
Shout out to Dr. Towery, who is the project manager.
Yes, it's Dr., thank you, Dr. Towery. I remember the, what did you call them, the focus sessions? Wow. All right, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries 7-0. 7.02, authorization for the school board chair to execute a lab school grant application. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the application.
Motion by Ms. Sigmund.
Second.
Second by Ms. Randall. Any discussion?
Madam Chair, if I could just chime in, there's been a lot of discussion about this in the state, but not a whole lot of discussion at the Stafford County public schools level. This is an exploratory opportunity to partner with UMW to apply for a potential grant that could lead to the creation of a regional lab school in partnership with the University of Mary Washington. We look forward to sharing more information, should we be the recipients of this grant, and bringing that back to the board at a later date. At this point, this is just exploratory.
Thank you. All right, any discussion? Cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion carries 7-0. 7.03, adoption of the FY24 school board operating budget priorities. Now, these priorities were revised based on discussion at the work session? Do we have, are they attached now to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Halsted, second by Ms. Sigmund. Any discussion?
I was literally still reading it.
Oh, do you need some time?
I just finished.
Okay.
I knew y'all read it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. All right, cast your votes. Tally the votes. Motion passes 7-0. 7.04, adoption of the school board legislative priorities. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Halsted, second by Dr. Warner. Any discussion? And these are the priorities as revised per discussion at the work session, correct? Yes, all right. Cast your votes. The last shall be first, Ms. Guy. I think I heard that somewhere. Oh, tally the votes. Motion passes 7-0. All right, we have a new 7.05, which was removed from the consent agenda. Approval of the award of a contract in the amount of $286,279 to Apex Companies LLC for water fountain testing using FY22 ESER funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Randall, do we have a second?
Oh, I second.
Who, who is it?
Maya Guy.
Did you whisper it?
I don't know why, I'm sorry.
She's trying to use her sexy voice.
No, I-
No, I only had one cup of coffee, I'm sorry.
Oh, I, I hear you. Thank you for seconding that, Ms. Guy.
She needs more chocolate.
Oh, we hear, do you need some of the? All right, motion by Ms. Randall, second by Ms. Guy. Any discussion? Dr. Chase, did you want to?
Yeah, so, I just wanted to, you know, sort of publicly have a little discussion about this to, you know, I've, I've heard from families who are upset that the water fountains are closed. I've heard from people that the water fountains were open, and then they were closed, and what did that mean? And so, just a little sort of explanation would be appreciated.
Before I defer to, to Mr. Fulmer, I don't for the life of me understand why this is not a bigger topic of conversation in other parts of the Commonwealth. And I may be a touch sensitive to this, coming from my previous school district, where through routine testing of cooling towers in Chesterfield County, we discovered a good bit of standing water in Legionella, and that was from regular use. So, we can only imagine water fountains that hadn't been used for an extended period of time when schools were closed down, that was problematic. And so, we, we went about a pretty rigorous course of investigation and testing. We discovered that several of our water fountains were not in as good a working order and required repair, not to mention that there, there's all kinds of nasty bacteria and potential other harmful things. Having them tested, treated, repaired, and restored, as safety being our number one priority really was a top priority for us, so I'm going to defer to Mr. Fulmer to fill in some additional details. But that really was the impetus of this, is just out of an abundance of caution, really taking a look at the things that we know needed attention, and again, I'm astonished why this is not a bigger conversation in other places.
So, I'm going to, I'll just build on that a little bit and give you a little bit of background. So, as Dr. Taylor mentioned, our water fountains across the division were closed for approximately two years or, or more during kind of the shutdown, and during COVID, even when we came back, just to prevent the- even when we came back, just to prevent the spread. It was a mitigation strategy. So when we were coming back this year, late last spring, we started planning with the maintenance staff of, since those water fountains had been, had not been in use for so long, wanted to test it to make sure there hadn't been any bacteria growth. This wasn't a requirement. There was a recommendation by CDC to do some testing, but out of an abundance of caution, we started by testing 25% of every water fountain in the division while we kept all of them closed. And we found some of them, some schools came back with no hits on those 25% in those schools. Some came back with one or two, you know, low levels of some bacteria. So we wanted to keep all water fountains closed except the ones that came back clean. So if we had tested them, they came back negative for any sort of bacteria, and we did our normal flushing, we went ahead and opened them back up. So some schools had all 25% of their water fountains open. Many of them had more than that, or the full 75% were closed. And then after that, we wanted to come up with a remediation plan for how we, what we did to those water fountains that did test positive, and what we did with the other 75%. So since the 25% tested, since we did have a few, only a handful at some schools, some schools had none, as I mentioned, we expanded that to test all 100%. So we tested 25, so we tested the other 75% of every water fountain in the division and kept them all out of commission and covered up until we get back. And happy to say, actually, this week, we're starting to get some of those results back. It is a lengthy process, so I apologize for how long that's taken. But during that period, we were, one, figuring out how to remediate the ones that did come back positive before we could open them back up. So we were going through some testing or some treatments and then some retesting. But then ultimately decided, let's go ahead and test all 75%, so we can open up any of them that do test negative. So we're at that point now where we're starting to get test results. And here in the next, probably, I'll say, seven to 10 days max, we should have all the results back for all the schools. Happy to report that three schools will open back up with 100% of their water fountains tomorrow, actually. We got test results back this afternoon, so they are already in action for opening those back up first thing tomorrow morning.
So have we already done this? I'm like, I'm being asked to vote for something that's already been done?
Yeah, so we notified you, it was kind of treated as an emergency, that we wanted, we needed to get this testing going because it is a very long process. So we notified you, but then we wanted to retroactively bring this to the Board and have you approve it, especially since we were using ESER federal dollars.
Got it, okay.
I have just one question. Is there a reason why we wouldn't use this money to put in, like, you know, they have those water bottle ones, you just put your, like, the ones that are over here? Is this sort of like duplicative, like, do we need to do this? I mean, our water fountains are clearly probably as old as our building. Would this money be better spent on new systems?
Great question, because actually, that was part of the reason why it took this long is because I said, if we're going to spend $300,000, could we just replace all of our water fountains and not have to test them all? And actually, just replacing the water fountain doesn't always fix the issue, is what we found. So we actually did replace some of the ones that tested positive. We replaced the water fountains. Come to find out, because the water line going back into the wall could actually, where the valve is, it could be sitting there and in the valve, and that's where the bacteria. So that was actually why we delayed the initial testing of all of them, and we're just now getting those test results back to open them back up, is because we didn't want to spend $300,000 to then have it go to waste. So we kind of had to come up with a game plan. So we did replace four water fountains, some in classrooms, some in hallways, with bottle fill stations, et cetera. And they did not, one of them was fixed, three of them were not. So we knew that wasn't the actual solution to all of them. So instead of just replacing every water fountain, we had to actually test them all. And then we're working on the remediation for the ones that we're going to keep out of service until we can get a clean hit on this.
So I should point out that we do have water fill stations throughout the division in all of our schools.
And that's kind of been an effort over the last several years to convert some of those, but those are actually pretty expensive. And just so you know, they don't work in every, you can't replace every water fountain with a bottle fill because of some of the plumbing and the way the walls are, it doesn't work out perfectly. But we're trying to.
You said expensive, like, what's the number? I'd just like to know.
A few thousand dollars for a water fountain with a bottle fill station, I think, and kind of the work and plumbing involved.
Have we just got water coolers at five gallons? Oh, gosh. Why, he actually has a mad look on his face. I've never seen one on his face.
Go to Ms. Randall.
He's like, please don't put any ideas in their head.
And when do you expect to have all fountains or water bottle filling stations back online?
So I will say 98% of them, probably in the next 10 days.
98?
Yeah, and that's largely a ballpark number because I know not everyone is going to have a clean hit. But since we've tested 100% and those test results are due back this week and next week, and as soon as they come back and they're clean, we're going to open up the water fountains. But there's going to be a handful that we're going to have to keep closed until we can finish the remediation.
And then how long do you think remediations will take?
Months, I would say, yeah. But that's only, and that's not.
Need to know.
Yeah, it'll be a handful at some schools, you know, none at some schools.
But we are supplying water for those schools that don't have the access to the fountains, correct?
Yes, ma'am, we've been providing bottled water all year.
And we will continue to do that until all the fountains are open?
Correct, yes. At each individual school.
However, and I will note this, we will stop supplemental water bottle placement if we have the vast majority of the fountains open at a school. If it's just one or two fountains at a school, we will not supply water bottles at that point. But if we have critical mass at a school where, you know, we do need to keep the majority of the fountains closed, we're going to continue our water bottle service.
Will you all let those communities know when they need to remember to bring their own water bottles or their filling, whatever? Yeah.
And I'm assuming if we have students with disabilities that have issues, that we would continue to supply the water there as well, correct?
Sure, yes, ma'am.
Okay, any other questions? No? All right, cast your votes. Tally the vote. Motion passes seven to zero. Wow. That was a roll. We'll roll right into the superintendent's reports and comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My superintendent's report is very short. As I prepare to enter my 11th month of service, my time as your new superintendent is wearing off. I'm fully aware of that, and I am quickly running out of firsts for me to attend, which is both a delight, but also a little sad, too. One of the first that I'm really looking forward to is, of course, Band Together Against Hunger. I have been looking forward to that for an entire year as I was hired immediately after that event last year, and have really been looking forward to that. The focus of my comments are actually twofold tonight. We have a special day planned for our secondary students tomorrow. Our eighth grade, ninth grade, 10th and 11th grade students will all be taking the PSAT test. This is a great opportunity for us to track our student performance against a national pool of students, and also for several of our 11th graders to qualify for the National Merit Scholarship. It's a great opportunity for us to see how we are doing in terms of student achievement. But there's also another special event that we are trying new this year, and it has a community component. Our 12th graders, while our underclassmen are taking the PSAT, have the opportunity to visit the Fredericksburg Expo Center for our first ever Chart Your Future event. And this is a two-part event. The first part of it is tomorrow, and it really is the culmination of their 13 years in school and their preparation for transitions to life after high school. We heard earlier today from one of our graduates who transitioned to a successful start to his professional life at Vichelli's Pizza, thanks to some of our programming and Project Search. But we have a lot of students who are looking for new opportunities for life after high school, whether that be employment, enlistment, or enrollment in a post-secondary opportunity. And we want to expose our kids to as many of those opportunities as possible. We have 84 exhibitors that will be there tomorrow at the Fredericksburg Expo Center that represent employers that are hiring, colleges that are looking for students, and our military branches will all be represented as well, looking for folks willing to give service to their country. Many of our students know exactly what they want to do after high school, and that's great. And we certainly want to give them an opportunity to reaffirm some of their decisions moving forward. But we do have several students that are still a big question mark. And we're hoping that this event helps to answer some of those questions. So we're asking all of our seniors to fill out a card as a deliverable for tomorrow's event, indicating what their plans are as of today for life after May 21st, and whenever graduation is this year. And kids who are, I shouldn't say even kids, are young adults who are getting ready to graduate, who are undecided, we're going to target some support for those students to help them decide so that all of our kids, upon graduation, have a game plan for either being employed, enlisted, or enrolled in a post-secondary opportunity. And we'll have an opportunity to celebrate those decisions on May 1st of 2023, which is National Decision Day. And we are all looking forward to that as a follow-up event to tomorrow's Chart Your Future event. So please stay tuned. It's a great opportunity to hear how our seniors are performing. But to make this event even better, we are opening it up to the community at large. From 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., folks can come to the Fredericksburg Expo Center and interact with the same exhibitors that our kids interacted with earlier that day. Our seniors will also have the opportunity to attend a couple of conference-style sessions of their choosing on topics like personal finance, credit cards, managing dietary needs for life after high school, basically adulting, which is a great opportunity for our kids to get one more dose of life preparation before they graduate. And we're hoping to make this an annual thing, but this is our first time doing it, so we're hoping to see how it goes. It is something new and different, and we hope that folks will join us tomorrow at the Fredericksburg Expo Center for this event. The second thing that I want to talk about is very brief. I'd like to give a follow-up endorsement to the item that Dr. Hummer talked about during his remarks, the I'm Determined Summit. I'm Determined is a great opportunity for not just our kids, but also our parents of students with disabilities to help to develop self-advocacy tools so that our kids can advocate for themselves and learn some survival skills for life after high school and be prepared confidently to take charge of their life and not to be limited by a perceived disability or actual disability. We're very proud of our students with disabilities and the ones that we hope that will participate in this very special event. I've participated in I'm Determined events before, and I know that we're going to do a great job supporting our kids and families. And this is just a great event for kids of all ages and parents of all ages, too. If you're looking for a dose of inspiration, I promise you that you will be able to find it at Mountain View High School on March 4th. Thank you, Madam Chair. That concludes my report.
I do indeed, thank you. I appreciate that. My daughter just dropped in, and my husband's itching to get her home, so she wants to wait for my comments to be done.
Oh.
Hi, Sophia. So, okay, so I have a few things. One, does anybody have a field report from National Night Out? We missed it.
Well, I actually ran into someone from the Sheriff's Department this morning who was doing some shopping for it. And I told her, you know, I was sorry we couldn't make it. And she goes, oh, no, I've been telling everybody the supervisors and the school board will be here. So apparently, there was a miscommunication about our meeting night, and it was set up for tonight, of course, this is secondhand, but so that the supervisors could attend. But I was told that there's nothing magic about it being on a Tuesday, and that next year, they will definitely look into making it another night so that we will all be able to attend. And I think she told me it was wrapping up around eight, so they're probably closing down.
Just about done, yeah.
About now.
Okay, so a few things that I just want to comment on. The first thing is the kids, the submissions that were received for Bully Prevention Month. You know, I watched the video today probably three times. That, I mean, it's just aside from the fact that it was a middle schooler that put the whole thing together, the creativity, and she just said she did all that stuff all by herself from scratch. So to me, that's exactly what I had hoped to get from something like that, was these kids really thinking about it, being able to use their talents, and see how far they could take those things. And I hope that we continue to do it year over year and maybe get bigger and better at doing more stuff. I have made appointments, I should say, scheduled appointments for visits to AG Wright, Anne Monckier, Drew Middle, and hopefully Anthony Burns tomorrow, and have just really tried to hold true to the commitment to get to all of our 33 schools in a short period of time, recognizing that November, there's a large piece of time taken out. So, you know, since I've gotten to the school board and I'm going on my 10th, of course, I'm fine the whole time I go to talk now, I'm all choked up, but, what are we coming up on? 10 months on the school board. It has been very interesting to me to see not just the intensity within which each of these topics is really kind of approached, but also the difficulty of making decisions that are really based on what that decision has to be based on. Not an emotion, not a feeling, not a, you know, it has to be on legality, on what's best for the school system, what's best for the kids. And we get these emails all the time that say, you can't please anybody. And when I tell you, you have no idea what that statement actually means overall. So there's a few things I just want to say on that. I will never understand, maybe it's my age, but I will never understand this new push to throw adult-level issues and burdens into our school systems. I just, I don't get it. Our kids, they stopped having fun. They stopped figuring out who they are and what actually defines them as a human being. And they continually focus on what they are, on what label has been assigned to them by someone. It's the antithesis of what most of us teach our kids. Because we teach our kids, be kind, be happy, be smart, read, do stuff like that. And we've allowed society to come in and inject this big burden on them to identify a what? I'm 51 years old. I'm still trying to figure out what I want to be when I grow up. I have changed the music type that I like. I've changed hairstyles. Thank God, it was the 80s, if you all remember when I was a kid. So hairstyles, careers, I've changed opinions, likes, dislikes, sports teams. This school, these school years are such a small part of what your life will be. But the burden they carry is that they define so much of what you take out there with you, and so much of what you're going to become. So when I hear folks come up and talk about a lot of these things, particularly in Bully Prevention Month, I get very stressed out thinking about the fact that we teach our kids to be who they're going to be or be what they're going to be and all that other stuff. But we don't, we cease to tell them not to funnel themselves or dig themselves in so deep they can't get out. Pick something now, be something now, have something now, or be flexible. Figure out that today, you like a French braid. Tomorrow, you want your hair curly. The next day, it's going to be straight, and all of that is okay. We don't do that anymore. And I wish that we could come to an agreement that our only goal is to make sure that in our school systems, our kids are focused on reading, learning, science, friendships, heartbreak. I had a woman tell me her anger about the school closures during COVID is because her son went away to college, got his first girlfriend, and she wasn't even there for any of it. She was anticipating all that stuff was going to happen in high school. He was going to meet his first girlfriend, have his first heartbreak. She was going to take him out for ice cream to talk about the heartbreak. And none of that happened. Let's just let kids be kids. And if anyone has any issues, we have the resources. So to show you that I'm putting my money where my mouth is, I have reached out to our health department. I did just get some dates from them. And I've let them know, we're in a serious crisis mode here, and it is time to sit down and find out where the loopholes. As a school board, as a, if we can help push legislation through, if we can help marry up our community service, help them identify, not just, they're not just responsible for schools, we are. But we need to be taking our kids who need help, and we need to be matching them up with people right away. Not when they can get an appointment in five months, not when the doctor's office, you know, says, okay, you've met A, B, and C, and D, and you can come in now, but right away. So please stay tuned, because I do hope to come out with some initiatives from that meeting that we can all work on together. I promise you, mental health is my number one focus for these kids. It's enough, they've had enough. On the mental health note, Maya said earlier there were little spiders falling from the ceiling, and I didn't believe her until I saw four.
We killed one over here.
Yeah. So I don't. Yeah. So I just want to ask, as a final closing note, could we call an exterminator and have them check out the spider problem at the school board? Huh? Yeah, sure. They stay away from him. Why? They only go to witches. Oh, never mind. Anyway. I thought it was a Halloween theme or something. So, yeah, so on that note, guys, just, you know, make sure you hug your kids goodnight every night. Make sure you tell them they're great, no matter what they are, no matter who they are, no matter what somebody thinks they are. It's never going to matter what somebody else thinks of you, only what you think of you. And that's where we stop teaching our kids. We don't teach our kids enough about, forget what he thinks or she thinks or they think. What do you think? So much, so much scrutiny on these kids. I can't imagine the pressure. That's all.
I mean, are we going to address the fact that I told you something and then you didn't believe me until you saw it four times? That's an issue, but that's okay. I'm gonna, we'll work on that. We will work on that with our relationship. But there seriously are little spiders, and I don't know where they're coming from, and some of us are allergic. Yeah, right? This is not okay. But that's fine. We're leaving soon. I do want to address the public comments. I do believe that every person gets a response for the public comments. Is that correct? Okay, because there was a choir resident that had some issues, and I'm glad that you guys are going to direct it. So, but if that person is listening, call me on my cell phone. My number is on the website. Or if you don't get the information you're looking for, and I'm happy to, I don't know if it's appropriate to say their name, so. But you're a woman. Okay, thank you. I want them to know.
It's all public information. Anyone can FO you.
Okay. Her name is Amanda. Call me Amanda. So I do think, I appreciate your comments about just letting people be who they are or letting them find their way. I will just say, as a member of an individual in a marginalized community, sometimes how we identify is a part of who we are. And when you can acknowledge that, we internalize that as respect. So that is the reason why some individuals do choose to, I don't know, live in a particular way where their identity or how they identify is like maybe a very, I don't want to say aggressive, because it's not aggressive. But you know what I'm saying? Like, they're loud about it, because it's important, especially when you've been marginalized and when you think that people don't understand your issues. So I do agree, we should allow kids to find their way and be who they are and teach them A, B, and Cs and 1, 2, 3s. But some people need a little extra care and concern. Some people need a little extra grace. And so I think that we can do that as well. I think we can teach and be a little holistic when it comes to our students. And the other thing I just want to say is I found out that my kids' teachers have been doing something incredibly considerate and just like super specific for my child, who's in 4th grade. And this had been going on at least since last year. I had no idea. And it's just one more thing that reminds me of how we are so freaking blessed in Stafford County with our employees, because these people are doing, I mean, this is not in a book. I don't know where they came up with this idea to help my child. But it's just the most beautiful thing. And then it reminded me, I'm not going to get all emotional, but one day my kid came home. This was years ago, but this is just another example of Stafford County employees. And she said, "Mom, if there would ever be a school shooting, you never have to worry about me, because I know my teachers love me and they will save me." And like, that just keeps happening in my life. I know it happens in others, and I just have to say thank you. And that's just, that's it.
Ms. Randall, wow, this is, all right, good stuff, ladies.
Okay, I'm taking a left turn at the light.
No pedestrians, right?
Yeah, yeah. All safe and mine.
Good.
All right. So first of all, I would like to thank Dr. Taylor for the listen-and-learn that he held in White Oak. I really appreciated him coming out and the attendees as well. And I would also like to thank Chief Bootsy Bullock, who was able to take Dr. Taylor to the Tribal Center. If you have not been, it is, they're not all the way open, but pretty close. And, but they still hold events there. And if you don't know where it is, just go like a mile past Ferry Farm on the right-hand side, same side. It's a pretty, pretty great place that has been helped along with the Board of Supervisors. So I also attended Community Night at Dixon Smith. I've always wanted middle school to have, other than sporting events, always have like some sort of a community event. So it's really nice to walk through there. And I got to, I read about it, that they have a former, I think she's a UMW student, that took an ambulance and retrofitted it into like a bookmobile. And she, I actually got, I've read about it, seen pictures. I actually got to go see it. So that was really fun. And walking around the school, lots of different activities and things for families there. They even had dinner there. And I understand that they will be, Dixon Smith will be hosting the Second Annual Model UN in our own county. All middle schools will be there, December 3rd, from 9:00 to 4:00. They have some pretty cool topics, looking for some specific people to help with the kids with some of their topics there, too. So I got to peek in at it last year, and the kids sitting there, all dressed up, talking to each other, being very formal, really learning good diplomatic procedures and policies. I got to, I have to say, I was gone for most of September because I went on a retreat, which was awesome, and I'm glad I did that, because then I embarked on an over-two-week trip across the country in my RV with my husband, and we were two feet apart 24/7. So I'm really glad I went to the retreat before I did that. But I have to say, if you ever have an opportunity to do a little traveling around the country, and I did see so many things, mostly out the window, because the answer to, can we stop and look at this, was always no. So, but still, to be able to see cowboys cowboying, that was really, like, one of my highlights, was to see cowboys cowboying. But also to see large farm fields and from early morning, how much work these people are doing to supply food, not only for humans but for animals, so that the animals can supply food or some other goods or service, to see fields and fields of different kinds of animals and the work. It's so much work at early morning to late-night hours. And just really some amazing people and amazing places. So I did the trip on purpose because my son, my Stafford County, former Stafford County teacher-student, left and moved out to Washington State. Miss him a lot, so Mom had to take a run out there. And, but I did text everybody when I was like, "Oh, I'm in your kids' community. Oh, I passed your kids' college." So, but if you ever get a chance to do any kind of just long drive, even go to Shenandoah, see the leaves change, we've got some pretty, pretty cool places around here to see. So that's all mine.
Ms. Sigmund.
It has been a very busy month, and I want to say if anybody in Stafford County is bored, they are not paying attention, because there are not enough nights in the week to go to all the cool things that our kids are doing. Our daughter is on Colonial Forge Chorus, and so I went to their Fall Chorus Concert, which is awesome, because you sit outside in your camp chairs, and they bring the Kona Ice Truck, and you can order your dinner from Mission BBQ. They do a vocal arrangement at the end where it's all of the service anthems, not Space Force, though. So I'm looking forward to that addition with Band Together to Fight Hunger. We opened our sports fields, our turf fields at North and at Colonial Forge. President, or president, yikes. Governor and Mrs. Youngkin visited Stafford County with one of our work-based learning partners and honored some, and visited with our esports kids. I've visited a lot of the schools that our residents in Garrisonville attend. Tomorrow is One Book for All Dragons at Anthony Burns. I will be there. I am not, I'm going to warn my colleagues that I have not had a ton of time to practice my flash mob dance, but I will try.
I'm going to video it.
Oh, it's going to be terrible.
If we come, we don't have to do that, right?
No, that's just me.
Oh, thank goodness. Okay.
Norstafford High School's homecoming was last week. Colonial Forge is this week. We had a great meeting with our PTO and PTA leaders in the community. It is always great to sit down with them and kind of get the unique needs, perspective, activities from every school. We've encouraged them all to invite us to stuff so that we can, you know, go see what all of our kids are doing. We had our legislative dinner with our delegates. And my big plug tonight is to recommend that everyone apply for a School Board Advisory Committee. We have 10 committees that you can join. They will start in January. Applications will be accepted through December 1st. Our committees are the Capital Improvement Plan, Career and Technical Education, Citizens Budget Committee, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Gifted, School Health, Special Education, Technology, Transportation, Visual and Performing Arts. The application's online and really easy to find. And we all want to have fully-staffed committees so that we can get feedback from all parts of our county and work together to bring, you know, about change and improvements to all of these facets to our kids' education. That's it.
Dr. Warner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that I've been to almost every high school to see how Power Hour's going. And I'm not going to lie, it was a little scary in the first part of the school year. But my last visits, I've seen kids with a strategy. They've had, they've talked about how great it is to be able to catch up on work and to meet with teachers, to do test corrections. I've seen the art rooms open. Kids have had a plan, then they seem to know what they're doing. And I'm getting more optimistic about Power Hour at the high school. I think it's an opportunity for kids to catch up with work. I just remember as a chemistry teacher and tutoring students at 7:00 a.m., which was not my favorite time of the day. I do want to share what Ms. Sigmund said. We do rely on parents for our advisory committees. We are taking applications. There's lots of opportunities for you to share your skills and your concerns with us on these committees. And the more parents that we have that apply and volunteer, the more we can get a good, broad cross-section of the community to advise us. I do want to thank all the PTOs. It's a very, it's always a really helpful meeting to meet with the PTOs, because most of those parents are in our schools, they're seeing things that we don't necessarily see, and they offer a lot of good tips to what's going on. I've had the opportunity to visit several elementary schools that I had not been to since I started. And it's exciting to see what our kids are doing in school. It's exciting to see our staff and how great they are and just how, I'm just so thankful for everything. And I look forward to going to Anthony Burns tomorrow and seeing Ms. Sigmund's flash dance.
Dr. Chase, I'm sorry. I had no idea. I just, I hope you're going to do it before 10:15, because I'm going to have to leave then to go down to the courthouse for a meeting.
I'll video it. We'll put it on the web.
Oh, my goodness. Yeah, I would also like to thank all the parents who are serving on PTOs and PTAs in Stafford County. As a former PTO, PTA officer, it's a lot of work, but it does help to really make school a better place for all our students. I got an opportunity to go to Wide Water and see the Dual Immersion Program. And I would recommend that everybody, when you get a chance, to go check it out, because it was really fantastic. And while I was there, a shout-out for Ms. Austin. I learned that Principal Bingham had COVID the first day of school, and she couldn't open her school. And Ms. Austin stepped in for her and did an amazing job, so I just wanted to give a shout-out for that. This is just a question for when Dr. Taylor gets a chance. When can parents go back to having lunch with their kids in elementary school? Because I remember that was a great thing to do, and it made our kids so happy. And I don't know what needs to happen, but I'd love to know when we can get around to that. And then, you know, I've gotten quite a few emails about this, the gender issue. And I have to say, it's hard for me as a teacher and a professor. I, it's very hard for students to learn if we don't use the name that they want to be used. And I always ask my students, "What name do you want to go by?" And then I respect that. Now, the difference is, my students are adults. And so I do understand that that's, that that is a little bit different. But it is hard to learn when people are calling you a name that is not the name that you recognize. And so I don't know how that works. And it does feel very discriminatory to me that if I'm going to require some students' parents to give permission for a nickname or a different name, that I'm not requiring that for all students. You know, and I understand, you know, like if your name's Antoinette, maybe you go by Tony. Well, that's kind of a boy's name, but it's kind of a girl's name. We don't have as much of that. Like, there aren't so many of those nicknames that go the other way. So it's just a question that I'm struggling with in terms of, is this, is this really fair? We do have an anti-discrimination, and it does feel somewhat discriminatory. So maybe we need a policy where you use the name that's there for everybody unless we ask all parents to provide acceptable nicknames for their students. I don't know, but it's just something I'm struggling with. Thank you.
Well, I had the pleasure of visiting Garrisonville Elementary with Ms. Sigmund, and happy to say that all the new students are doing great and that the school is very happy to be, you know, what is it, 100, almost 100% full. So things are, things are working out well in Gatorland. And we also visited Whining Creek, which was really unique, because when we visited, there was no, it was a teacher workday, so there were no students in school. And usually when I'm in school, there's lots of kids and lots of things going on. But there were, there were a lot of things going on. But what I really appreciated was the opportunity that we had to walk through the school with Mrs. Wardlow and to talk to the teachers. There were quite a few teachers, and it was a very relaxed atmosphere, because they didn't have to worry about all the kids in the classroom. And it reminded me, Ms. Guy, of, you know, what you were saying, you know, about how the teachers go the extra way, because you really could tell that they were, they were speaking from their heart. And, I mean, we saw what looked like brand-new teachers. We saw teachers that probably have several decades of experience teaching. And it was across the board, this commitment to the students. But, you know, one thing that I did notice is, and this came up in the PTO, PTA, PTSA meeting, is that we do have schools that have a lot more resources available from the parents. And we were, you know, shown some pretty amazing gifts that the PTO had given to the school in the music room and also water bottle stations that the PTOs had paid for. And I think, I think that's great, because I know how committed the parents are. And they have the time and they have the resources to give to the schools. But then we have other schools, and I hope you don't mind, Dr. Warner, but Wide Water, you know, came up in the PTO meeting, that the president of the PTO was talking about how challenging it is to raise funds and that they do a school-wide fundraiser, you know, at one of the local restaurants and make the tops $80. So I think, you know, if there's something we can do to help out some of the schools that don't have those, you know, extra resources. And I'm not saying, you know, make it all equal, but I think we have to recognize that some of our schools are very, very fortunate because of the communities that they have, you know, in their student population and the resources those families have and are, you know, are generous to give to the schools, while there are other schools that just don't have it. And we need to make a special effort, I think, to help particularly the teachers in those schools, because that's really what a lot of the PTOs do. They make life better for our teachers. And they help them with resources. I mean, geez, food, all kinds of things going on. But if there's some way we can think about that, and we actually were encouraging schools to adopt- we can think about that, and we actually were encouraging schools to adopt other schools, which I've seen happen in the past with, you know, after one of these PTO meetings. So, I'd like to, you know, look into that. I know we're going to be looking at school-based resources, and I assume that's for the educational setting, but if there's anything we can do, and if not, as Stafford County Public Schools, if there's something that we could, you know, match up, community organizations or community members who want to do something with the schools, to kind of focus some on some of our schools that don't have all those resources from their, you know, their parent populations, that I think would be very, very helpful. But we had, we had a great meeting, and I'm looking forward to tomorrow. I had no idea about the dancing. I mean, wow, it's like, getting a bonus. Looking forward to National Night Out next year, because that's always one of my favorite events. And I'm really sorry we're not able to go today, but we have something to look forward to next year. And wanting to let everybody know, next Tuesday, between 5:15 and 6:30, that our entire school board is meeting with the entire Board of Supervisors to discuss our Capital Improvement Plan, which I think anybody who keeps up with us knows is very important to this board, and, you know, making sure that the supervisors understand our view of the priorities and the needs of Stafford County Public Schools. And the agenda that was tentatively scheduled at Brookpoint Library, is that the place?
That's firm.
Okay, so that's, all right, well, is that, is that a final? That's what the calendar says it's tentative, but check our website.
The culinary arts students are preparing.
Oh, wow. Culinary arts, wow.
For the supervisor.
That'll be, that'll be a real treat. Maybe we'll, well, we can't wine them, but we can sure dine them. We'll have to do the whining, ladies.
Well, I'll be whining.
After we dine, we whine. All right, well, I'm going to close the meeting, send everybody home, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.